Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to this meeting of the South and West Plans Panel. My name is Councilor Paul Ray, and I will be chairing today's meeting. Could I remind everybody that today's meeting is being livestreamed onto the Leeds City Council YouTube channel so that the public can observe the meeting without the need to be present? Could I also remind members of the public present that this is a formal meeting? Whilst we welcome your attendance, we ask that you do not approach members of the panel during the meeting, and that the proceedings are observed quietly and without interruption. If this is not adhered to, you may be asked to leave, and the meeting will be suspended to facilitate this. South and West Plans Panel deals with applications from the south, north, west, and west of the city. The aim of the panel is to hear all the relevant information from applicants, members of the public, and council officers to help members of the panel make their decision. Could I now invite members and officers to introduce themselves and mute their microphone once you've introduced yourself? If we could please start from my left.
Andrew Creates, Principal Planning Officer.
Good afternoon, I'm John Booth, Principal Highways Engineer.
Graham Ashton, Ecology and Biodiversity Officer.
Afternoon, everybody. Andy Parham, councillor for Armley.
Good afternoon, everybody. Councillor Raymond Jones, councillor for Horstworth.
Afternoon, everyone. Andy Ronshie, councillor for Kirkcaldy.
Good afternoon, everyone. It's councillor Hayley France, Mayor for Moretown and Meemwood.
Good afternoon, everyone. Councillor Kelly Monaca for Bemington and Richmond Hill.
Good afternoon, everyone. Councillor Zara Hussein, Roundy Ward.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Daniel Illingworth, in part of the Plans Panel team.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm councillor Penny Stables from Wetherby Ward.
Good afternoon. Councillor Barry Anderson, Adlington Warfield Ward.
Good afternoon. Sam Firth from the Harewood Ward.
Hi, everyone. Natasha Prosser, the Committee Clerk.
Hi. Nikki Deol, Head of Legal Services and Advisor to the Panel today.
Good afternoon. Jonathan Carr, Head of Development Management.
Afternoon. Steve Butler, Group Manager for South and West and Lead Office at South and West Plans Panel.
Thank you much for that, everyone. Moving to the agenda, could I ask the clerk to go through Agenda Item 1 to 5, please?
Thanks, Chair. Agenda Item 1, there's no appeals. Agenda Item 2, no exempt items. Agenda Item 3, no formulate items. Agenda Item 4, members to declare any interests at this point. Thank you. Agenda Item 5, I've not received any apologies, Chair.
Thank you very much for that. Item number 6, minutes of the previous meeting held on Thursday, the night for January 2025. Do members accept these minutes as a true and correct record? I'll take silence as a yes. Excellent. Are there any matters arising? Perfect. Item number 7, installation of 8 by 8 metre high floodlight mast to existing tennis court and 6 15 metre high floodlight mast to existing 3G pitch on land at Coburn School, Gypsy Lane, Beeston, Leeds, LS 115 TT. Could I please ask the officer to present the application?
Thank you, Chair. The application is brought to Plans Panel following on from a planning permission granted in 2022, which some members may recall, and that relates to a 3G pitch and tennis courts. Just to work. The 3G pitch and tennis courts just to the south of Coburn School in Beeston. And at that time, the application was just for those facilities and four and a half metre high fencing around, but there were some concerns about potential future lighting, and that's recorded in the minutes. And so this application, which seeks to obtain approval for floodlighting, is somewhat contrary to that resolution and is therefore brought to Plans Panel. It's also true that the application has proved somewhat sensitive in the locality, so there are a number of representations relating to particularly wildlife and neighbour amenity issues. In terms of the development plan, the site falls just to the south of Coburn School, so it sits within the green belt. To the north of it is within the main urban area, and to the east of the school are its existing pitches, so that's the brighter green colour, which are protected playing pitches. To the east of the site, in the darker green, is the green space designation, and that covers Middleton Park and in particular Middleton Woods, which is also designated ancient woodland. So just in terms of a bit of geography, clearly this aerial photograph is from Google and predates the installation of the pitches, but in essence, you can see the school there in the centre of the screen, an existing 3G pitch to its east, which is also floodlit by 8 15 metre high floodlight masts currently, and then surrounding pitch areas to the east and north. And to the north, as labelled there on the screen, is Southley Drive, Southley Grove, and Southley Avenue. So there's a residential area sitting to the north of Coburn School, and they've referenced in the report. To the west of the site, and just to the west of the school, is Gypsy Lane, running north-south, and there is an area of residential development around the links, Tanglewood and Farnet Close, which is probably the nearest residential area to the west of the school, and beyond that is the outer ring road and to the south-west of Leeds. Again, there you can see on the right-hand side the very dense woodland within the ancient woodland area within Middleton Park, and to the south, you can see what was the former Leeds Golf Course site within which the two pitches sit. So given you can't see the pictures within the aerial photographs, we've included this visual, which is from the design and access statement submitted with the application, which just gives a close-up view of those pitches, the tennis courts, and the fencing around. I will, I've included, yeah, so, included this slide, which is essentially the layout proposed. So around the tennis courts, you can just about make out the four red references to the north side and the four red references to the south side, and they are the floodlighting columns for those tennis courts. There's four, sorry, eight, eight metre high floodlight masts, four on each side, and then around the 3G pitch, there are six, again, three on each side, and they're 15 metres high at that point. Also relevant on this plan is the public right-of-way, which runs between the school and the pitch facilities, and then to the south, as we walked on the site visit this morning, in part at least the path that's been created to the south of those pitches. Then we have some elevational details of the masts, so these are the eight metre masts, which are typical of the sort of type that would be anticipated current time, slimline, pole provision with a light on top, and then the 15 metre high masts as well. So just to provide some context to the application site, this is actually the reverse of the route we took on the site visit this morning. So this is actually taken from, this first photograph is from the public right-of-way between the school and the pitches, so you can just about see there the school in the distance. The area of thick vegetation on the right-hand side is a kennels, although it was noted this morning it's very quiet, so I think they're currently redundant, and they separate the site from the nearest residential development at Tanglewood, which is the houses you can see on the other side of Gypsy Lane in the photograph there. Then running through, so down from that public right-of-way, I've got the entrance to the facility across from the school, clearly with a lot of planting that's taken place. You can see there the plateaus that have been created through a cut-and-fill operation to create the areas for the tennis courts and the 3G pitch. This particular view is from the right-of-way, so that's the cobbled right-of-way we were stood on this morning, and essentially that demonstrates that change in levels as a result of that cut-and-fill operation. So the fencing you can see on the left-hand side there is four and a half metres high, so you can gauge the context of a 15 metre high floodlight column relative to that, and on the right-hand side of the photograph, there's an area of palisade fence, which actually is the boundary to those pitches I was referring to earlier. And in this photograph, you can see that 3G pitch and the protected playing pitch areas of the school beyond. You can just about make out the houses on the horizon there. So those particular dwellings would be sighted 168 metres away from the proposed floodlight columns, and it's 202 metres to the end of Southley Avenue, which is roughly in the centre of the screen there. So then panning around to the south-east side of the site, sorry, north-east side of the site, and the eastern side, and again, you see the relationship between the levels and the existing woodland on the right-hand side. There's a distance of around 35 metres or so between the existing development and the woodland, but there's a clear, you know, sensitive relationship there. And coming around to the south, the south-east, where the land starts to rise towards Middleton Park and the woods, you get a much higher vantage point, and from there you can see the school in the distance and the wider area of South Leeds and towards the city centre on the horizon. So again, you're in quite an elevated position relative to the 3G pitch, and then panning around to the tennis courts, which again are set within the hillside, and the path we walked on this morning is to the left of that photograph, running back towards Gypsy Lane. And again, as you, again, as you go up the hillside, that view obviously increases in terms of its distance, and I think as we estimated this morning, the floodlight columns would be roughly the height of those rugby pitch goalposts. So this particular photograph is taken from the west side of Gypsy Lane, and again, on the, on the left-hand side, you can just about make out the roof of the kennels area, and then there's obviously trees and undergrowth adjacent to Gypsy Lane, so you can just about make out the blue surface of the tennis courts between the trees at that point, and then that's looking back towards Tanglewood, the residential development in the west side of Gypsy Lane, looking across to the east. And here, so these series of photographs are taken as you travel south, looking from the park back towards the development. So again, within the centre of that photograph, you can just about make out the tennis courts and the pitches. And then this is from the vicinity of the South Leeds Golf Course buildings, which are further up Gypsy Lane, and again, from that point of view, it's actually, just about make out the top corner of the 3G pitch. I've included these, which, because they demonstrate really the thickness of that woodland vegetation, so the series of pedestrian paths through Middleton Woods, so these looking northwards. What you can't really appreciate from the photograph is, clearly these were taken a couple of weeks ago, and it is possible to see glint of buildings within the city centre, you know, Bridgewater Place and buildings of some height, but you wouldn't be able to see the pitches or associated floodlights, at least in daylight hours. Then again, from a higher vantage point, so that's in the vicinity of the Ice House for those who know Middleton Park. And lastly, I've included this slide, which is from the end of Southley Avenue, which is a cul-de-sac to the north of Coburn School, and this is really just to show that relationship between the rears of properties and the rear gardens. The pitch you see is actually the existing pitch to the east of the school, and in the distance is the 3G pitch, which was developed in 2012. So you can just about make out in the photograph the series of floodlight columns, so they're the eight 15 metre high floodlight columns I referred to earlier. So the proposed floodlighting columns would be further in the distance behind that particular 3G pitch. So clearly, one of the key issues that arises from the floodlighting of pitches, as is often the case, is the desire to ensure that lighting is focused on the pitch areas and doesn't spill out into surrounding areas, particularly where there are sensitivities around wildlife. So in this instance, you can see the red spot figures are the lux levels over the pitch, so as you'd expect there, the high-intensity areas in order to make the sports facilities usable. The blue contours are where those numbers drop away, down to sort of 50, 15, 5, and so on, but this is essentially an unmitigated lighting scheme. So what would be proposed, as is often the case on these types of facilities, is to attach a condition requiring mitigation measures to ensure that those lux levels are focused on the pitch areas and not spilling out into wider areas, and that can be achieved through the use of shutters and so on, and mounts behind the lights. So I think at the moment, they're proposed on one side but not all sides, so we'd be seeking those sorts of protections on all of those lights to ensure that they're acceptable. Just in general terms, this is really sort of to demonstrate what I was just saying in terms of the floodlighting being focused on the pitch areas, and immediately behind the pitch, we ideally want that as dark as possible, as quickly as possible, so you can see there, the areas around that particular pitch are in darkness. Yeah, so one of the, one of the key sensitivities has been around wildlife, particularly bats. When the application was submitted in October, it's clearly outside of bat activity season, and so the applicants have sought this permission in order to floodlight the facilities for most months of the year, except for that peak summer period when bats will be active in the vicinity. They have undertaken a survey of trees, so it's a ground-level tree assessment survey, so that essentially involves looking at an area around the site, so the blue line on the screen is effectively a 50 metre buffer around the application site, and they've then assessed trees in terms of, you know, their type and nature, looking for fissures within those particular trees. So the yellow dots represent trees where there is bat roost potential for single or small groups of bats, so they're, in some ways, the lower sensitivity of a sensitive protective species. The green dots are, in particular, they're trees which are recognised as having the potential for hibernation and maternity reeds, so they're in some ways more sensitive. So as you might expect, there's a cluster of those within the ancient woodland area to the east, but there are also a couple at the western end. The context here, of course, is that they're quite some way away from the pitch areas themselves, so the lux levels, going back to the previous slide that I showed, are actually very low in those areas, so they're below half a lux, which is deemed to be acceptable in terms of its impact on bats. It is recognised that within this plan, you'll see, there are a couple of trees, particularly along the public right-of-way, which are close to the northern side of the pitch, and also the pitches are elevated at that point as well. So there is a recognised sensitivity there, and also it's recognised that bats obviously may well come out earlier in the season, so potentially coming out in earlier spring and be around into later autumn. So in order to address that particular matter, they suggested that a condition is attached to require a lighting design strategy for bats, which again is something that we've done quite often on other schemes as well. So again, it's looking at those measures to reduce lux levels, make changes to the particular floodlights in question in order to ensure they're acceptable. Allied to that is also birds, there's a sensitivity on birds and potentially nesting birds. Essentially, the way it's viewed is if you manage to deal successfully with mitigation for bats, that also applies as being beneficial to birds and other wildlife, and also insects as well, so the warmer the light, the less attractive they will be to those particular floodlights. But again, that's something that we can assess through that design strategy. So following on from that, that gives rise to the proposed condition, which seeks hours of floodlight use at particular times and seasons of the year to avoid that conflict with bats, as set out in the report. Additionally, cognizant of policy G9, which seeks biodiversity improvements, that's separate from mandatory BNG, in recognition of that, it's considered appropriate to impose a condition requiring bat roosting and bird nesting mitigation features, that could include, for instance, bird boxes, bat boxes, and so on, and they could be located within the school premises to avoid issues around vandalism and so on. So that can be secured by a condition. Given the overall distances from proposed floodlighting columns to residential properties, it's considered that they are substantial distances and clearly greater distances than the existing floodlighting around the pitch to the east of the school, but it is noted that in representations, comment has been made around the recent floodlight, the 2012 scheme to the east of the school, and how successful or otherwise that may have been, and how complaints have been dealt with by the school. So it's considered appropriate nonetheless to impose a condition that requires a scheme for dealing with complaints about floodlighting to be agreed with the council, and for tweaks to that lighting to be made further if required. So on those issues, overall, there are neutral matters in the balance of considerations. As I mentioned, the application falls within the green belt, and under paragraph 154 of the MPPF, it does meet the exceptions in terms of being facilities that are appropriate for outdoor sport and recreation. That said, they are feasible, albeit they do disappear into the background landscape, as we noted on-site this morning, but clearly in times when they're illuminated, they will be particularly perceptible, and so it's considered that there is some harm, albeit minor harm, but on that basis, they therefore can't be said to wholly preserve openness, and so permission can't be granted unless very special circumstances are demonstrated. As set out in the report, the applicant has made a case of very special circumstances in terms of the benefit of participation in sport and recreation, in terms of the wider health and wellbeing agenda, and referenced particularly local and national sports initiatives. It's also noted that since, well, over the passage of time, the school has increased its capacity in terms of students enrolled, and that's put pressure on PE facilities and the curriculum, and so expanding the availability of these pitches in terms of their usage helps to deal with that particular demand. Within the application, it does also reference the community use agreement attached to the original permission, and that whilst it does set out the hours of use as being permissible until 9pm, it does state within daylight hours only, so it's not quite the case that this is absolutely necessary in order to fulfil the requirements of the community use agreement, but clearly it optimises the availability or the, you know, the availability essentially to make those facilities available, which clearly, again, comes back to that point around increasing participation in sport and recreation. So overall, significant weight is attached to that, to those benefits, and so therefore it's considered that the very special circumstances do exist, which outweigh that minor harm to the green belt, and on that basis, the application is recommended for approval with those conditions as attached at the start of the report.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you very much for that. Now, we do have people speaking in opposition to this application. Could I please ask Alan Shaw and Susanna Grace to come to the front? You start, and that four minutes will be shared between you.
Hi, my name is Alan Shaw. I'm a trustee of the Friends of Middleton Park, and we object strongly to this application. I'm going to speak for a minute and then pass over to Suzanne. Firstly, I'd like to say I'm quite disappointed in the way that this has been organised by the Plans Panel. I only found out about this on Monday, so this has been a bit of a struggle to get here. The original planning application for this site agreed last year did not include any proposals for floodlights, although lighted bollards were included, and the underground works for the lighting was also included. This application states that apparently the reason for the application of floodlights is due to the conditions imposed on the planning committee, by the planning committee agreeing the original planning application for the pitch and tennis courts, which I do find a little bit astounding. The impact focuses on the impact on the properties to the east of the site, they're well over 100 metres away, and to a certain extent already screened by trees and the elevation of the land. The impact assessment of the surrounding grassland, local nature reserve, and nearby semi-ancient woodland is insufficient, and seemingly concentrating on just the bat species. At this nearest point, the development of floodlights, I reckon would be approximately 20 metres from the edge of the tree line for Middleton Park. Is that me done? That's one minute, okay.
Given the time Plans Panel has already spent debating this particular development, it's dumbfounded that the case officer and school wish to overturn conditions put in place to protect green belt and residential amenity. The case officer stresses it's a separate application, but the applicant has based the entire application on condition 26 of the previous planning permission, whilst conveniently ignoring condition 14 and 16, advising no lights other than low-level lighting and daylight operation only. The chief planning officer's report stated that floodlighting is not included to minimise the amount of development and harm to the openness of the green belt. The key driver is to address the shortages of school facilities. The community user agreement was simply an add-on to justify taking away public green space. The pupils and community already have access to the existing floodlit pitch. Residents consistently report they are not fully used. Meanwhile, council-run Middleton Leisure Centre operating a 3G pitch is in deficit of 222,000. Sport England think floodlit tennis courts might cater for overspill from John Charles Tennis Centre, but we know that the floodlit courts at John Charles are not fully booked on an evening either. The area already has enough existing or pending floodlit pitches. The case officer claims that the saturation of facilities is not relevant, but the MPPF is clear, the purpose of the planning system is to contribute to the achievement of sustainable development. It makes no sense to floodlight surplus facilities whilst existing council ones are struggling or in construction. The case officer bases his recommendation on an increase in health and wellbeing, but gives scant regard for the health and wellbeing of residents. He ignores the cumulative effect of all this ultra-bright lighting in one residential area and underplays the extra noise and traffic pollution. Residents are very clear that the existing floodlights significantly impact them, it's disingenuous to claim these new ones won't. It will affect visual amenity for anyone taking an evening walk towards the park, not just neighbours. These are very tall structures impacting the park. Indeed, the case officer anticipates future complaints, advising that there is a process for dealing with them, and there have been many complaints over the existing school lighting. Only last week, one resident expressed her frustrations with the school. "I'm sick of the security lights, which are meant to be low lights, which are not. Been on all night, and the car park lights, which are left on too. What's that about? There's no consistency with the lights." Asked about complaining, she commented, "Done it time and time again." Astonishingly, the case officer has not highlighted the fact that this development sits within Leeds Wildlife Habitat Network. that this development sits within Leeds Wildlife Habitat Network Site, protected by Policy G nine. It is also adjacent to ancient woodland and nature reserve, protected by Policy G eight. Floodlight design can reduce insect deaths, but they still kill insects. This insect decline impacts birds, bats and species like hedgehogs that rely on moth caterpillars for food. Moths are declining faster in...
You can complete your sentence.
All right, moths are declining faster in UK woods than any other habitat.
Thank you very much for that. So we will now move to questions to the objectors. Do any members have questions to the objectors? No, then, well, thank you very much for that. We do have people in support of the application. Could I please invite Emma Watson to the front? You'll have four minutes once you're ready to start. And just this thing, I think if you maybe lean in slightly to the mic, because the mic isn't quite picking up the sound clearly, so thank you. That's our mics for you.
So, good afternoon, everyone. I'm Emma Watson, Chief Operating Officer for Coburn Multi-Academy Trust. I just want to pick up a couple of issues that were raised by the objectors there. This application is an application made by Coburn. The previous application, which was approved, determined and approved, was the Leeds City Council application for the pitches. So they are very different and need to be considered as such. Also, the comment around the pitch saturation. So in the draft three G Leeds Football Facilities Plan, there are currently twenty nine point two five full-size pitches shortfall within Leeds. And ten of those, ten of that shortfall sit within South Leeds. Now, some of that will be taken eased by the Matthew Murray and the Hunzlett Club facilities development, but that does mean that there is still a shortfall of pitches within South Leeds. The project is about improving the facilities. It's about creating those lasting opportunities for the young people, promoting health and wellbeing and fostering a sense of community pride. For information, Coburn School, as of December twenty twenty four, had three hundred first-choice applications for September twenty twenty five intake. And that's on a published admission number of two hundred and forty. We will be taking a bulge cohort. We understand that introducing floodlighting must be done sensitively and we do take seriously our responsibility to the local environment and to the community. We fully support and agree the mitigating conditions that are set out by the planning officer, ensuring that the impact on wildlife and nearby residents is managed responsibly by us. We also acknowledge that within the report, there are concerns of nearby residents regarding the potential light intrusion, although the design will mitigate some of these issues. We want to reassure them that we will deal with any concerns or complaints. A note from the objectors that there was reference to that. Without context, I'm unable to give comment on that. But certainly, in my position as chief operating officer, I can go back to Coburn School and get the detail around that and make sure, in line with the condition, that there's a robust reporting and way of dealing with any complaints that would come into the school. The Kyle Asquith Pitch is a vital asset to Coburn School and the wider community, offering young people an opportunity to develop skills, build confidence and stay active. By approving this application, you'll be investing in the future of our students and the children of South Leeds and many community groups that will rely on these facilities. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. Questions to the, I've completely forgot this, questions to the supporter, councillor Firth and councillor Parham. Oh, yeah, councillor Parham wants to go further, there we go.
Hello, thank you for your presentation. I've just got two quick questions. One is, how can you ensure that the lights won't be left on all night? Or are you able to actually ensure that? Can there be a timing mechanism built in? And secondly, how much community use will there be apart from schoolchildren?
So in answer to your first question, councillor, we can, the design does still need some work up in line with recommendations from the planning officer. So certainly we can look at ensuring that there's some timing mechanism within that. We also have a premises manager that does live on site now. So that will also help to mitigate that. And in terms of community use, we do see a lot of community use. I can't give you the exact figures, but we have received a lot of inquiry. So we utilise the Leeds City Council letting service. So inquiries would come through Leeds City Council and then back to us. Obviously, with it being dark at the moment, we've not been able to fulfil that. But the new pitch is used on a Saturday through the day.
Yeah, just to come very quickly, it wasn't a trick question. I mean, I just wondered if it was primarily for school use. It sounds like it is, which is fine by me.
School use...
Yeah, I just wondered if you were hoping to extend it into the wider community or not. But maybe that's not feasible.
It absolutely is feasible, councillor, yes. And we would do that and the existing pitches are used. In fact, pitches, the school campus is used by external community groups already. Thank you.
Councillor Firth.
Thank you for your presentation. It's similar vein to councillor Parham. This application obviously was approved and presented by the Plans Panel back in twenty twenty two by the council. And at that point, it was then agreed and there were concerns raised about the lights. So can I ask what's changed since then, given the success of the pitch getting that through and the permission and its completion? And then as a result of that, you've mentioned on the second question that there is a view to community use, but you've also mentioned that it's going to be school use. Why is it different now in terms of what is the school needing to use those floodlights for compared to when they actually had the application approved from the council back in twenty twenty two?
So the original application councillor was a Leeds City Council application. The contentious areas around that, it's probably not for me to comment on the whys and wherefores of that. It was granted with the conditions that it was granted with. We were able to make use of the pitch in those conditions in terms of school. However, it extends extracurricular for the school to have the floodlighting and it also extends for that community engagement and community use of the pitches with the floodlighting.
Just before I bring in councillor Anderson, I just want to check something because obviously I appreciate the application was brought by Leeds City Council. Clearly conversations would have happened between the local authority and Coburn, bearing in mind you would be the primary use. So bearing in mind that was a condition that was applied for not to bring lights, surely Coburn was aware of that when he was having his conversations with the council? Is that not correct?
I wasn't there at the time councillor, but I would say aware, yes.
So they were aware that there was a condition that was agreed, bearing in mind they were going to be the primary user, that lighting was not to be installed?
As part of that application.
Thank you, I just want that clarification, please. Councillor Anderson.
Do you have access to the papers that we've got in front of us or not?
I do, yes.
You do? Can you look on page seventeen, paragraph twenty five? Which is the comments of the local ward members?
Yes, I can see that.
Can you give me responses to the points that they have raised? Can you go through the points that they've raised and give me your take on them and how you've gone about reaching an agreement with your local councillors?
So these are ward members from Middleton, not from Beeston, yeah. So I've already addressed the first point, which is around the provision of sports facilities in the area.
But on that point then, so do you think that they are right or wrong that there is going to, that there is going to be sufficient?
I can refer you back to the Leeds Football Facilities Plan, which is in draft.
You must have, I mean, surely as the school, you've done a business case to look to see what's going to be the viability of this. Do you feel that there will be a lot of competition? Or do you feel that there's a shortage of supply and that you'll be able to fill this gap that's been created? And the other ones that they mentioned will not be able to satisfy local demand?
The ones that the councillors have mentioned will assist in the demand, but there is a shortfall and our pitch will also assist in that.
What about the next ones?
So in terms of the wildlife, I think the presentation that you've seen around that and the proposed conditions will assist in mitigating that paragraph.
The next one about prior pitch at weekends?
I don't know where that comment would have come from. There's no, we wouldn't stop anyone using pitches at the weekends.
And what about the last bit? If permission is requested, can you provide the assurances? Which means we can't condition them, but can you give those verbal assurances?
Well, I mean, it wouldn't be for me to say on bullet point one, that would be a planning matter. Certainly, bullet point two, I think we've addressed in terms of how we would manage any concerns or complaints from residents. And in terms of prioritising, I understand that local clubs do use our existing pitches. So they would go through the Leeds City Council lettings process.
Fine, so to come back to the first bullet point, if evidence was showing that there was impact, would Coburn close the lights down if impact was proven?
But I don't think we would get to that point councillor, because we're going to have the mitigation conditions as part of the proposal from the planning officer. So whether that's the shutters to the lighting, the hoods to the lighting, they will have been addressed before we get to the lights being erected and then causing an issue.
Fine, thank you.
Councillor Firth.
Thank you. Just wanted to come back on something I was saying before. And also just want to add that it's obviously true that, yes, the school is in Beeston Holbeck, but the actual application is in Middleton Park Ward. That was why it was particularly raised, why councillor Anderson, about the fact the concerns raised by the Middleton Park councillors. Given the opposition that was raised to the application in twenty twenty two, and obviously there's been opposition to this one in the community from certain factions in terms of otherwise and also the ward members, have you met or engaged with any of the ward members from either ward and which ones, if so? And have you engaged with any of the community groups that have these concerns to either discuss it or address it or more generally, to be able to have a discussion about what the plans are going forward?
The application has just been submitted.
So that's a no then, yes, yeah, okay.
So just to confirm, that's no additional consultation was taken beyond what statutory consultation that the council has to do in terms of the site notices?
That's right.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Stables.
Good afternoon. I just wondered if you could tell us what percentage of time the current three G pitch is used, please?
I don't have that information with me.
Yeah, councillor Firth.
I think some of the, we'll see what happens, but I think questions may be drying up. So I wanted to ask, come back with one question I asked earlier. Why is it now that the school is wanting to make this application? Is there an upsurge in demand for the particular pitches? You've mentioned about the curriculum and giving more opportunities to the students. But why is it now rather than, you know, two and a half, three years on from the original application? And what evidence do you have to show that the actual demand is there to provide this? Other than obviously expanding the curriculum for students?
So in terms of why now, obviously there's been a time to procure and deliver the pitch under that application and ensure that any conditions were discharged as part of that application and construction of the pitch. So that's why now.
Can I cheekly ask for a clarification then? When did the pitch actually, and the pitches and the tennis courts open?
Open councillor, April, April last year, not this year, otherwise it would be in the future.
Any other questions for members? Yeah councillor, Ron Tree.
Thank you, Chair. I'm looking at paragraph seventy in the officer's report here. And I'm wondering, when it says, given the time of year and desire to optimise use of the facilities as quickly as possible, it's not possible to wait until next summer. Now, I appreciate this may be a question I should perhaps take up with the officers later, but I'd just like your take on this. The desire to optimise use of the facilities. I mean, if it's a desire, it doesn't sound like it's a case of it's possible or not possible. I'm just wondering if, why are we going through it at this speed? When do you, if your planning permission is granted, when would you envisage the lights coming into operation?
So we do have any conditions, if the application were to be approved, we would have the conditions and then we would need to scope up the lighting specification, procure and then move forward to deliver it.
All right, so roughly how long will that take? I mean, are you planning on having this in operation in a couple of months, is that...?
I think we probably would be looking at, I mean, I'm thinking off the hoof. It's not a definitive timeline, but, and I would have to liaise with our architect. But I would think we'd be looking maybe six to eight weeks in terms of design and submitting that for approval. Procurement is perhaps four or five weeks thereafter, some leading time. And then we would be looking to get works commenced on site.
So before this summer then, potential?
Hopefully so councillor, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, members? Councillor Firth.
Another question from me, sorry about this. One to ask in terms of looking at the design that you've had here with the lights here. There are obviously going to be eight lights in particular around the tennis courts. Is there a particular reason or standard that you have to meet in terms of the amount of lights that there is or are proposed to be? Or is that simply the desire for the particular thing? Or is there, what has been assessed? Or have you been looking at other pitches elsewhere to come to the amount of lights that you are proposing and the strength of them?
So the lighting design has come from a lighting design company, an organisation that are dealing this. And it would be the looks levels to the playing areas that need to meet criteria. I don't have that criteria with me, but we have engaged with a third party expert.
So thank you for that clarifying, somewhat clarification. I just wanted to say that, for example, there was no way of mitigating in terms of having the lights on one side of the pitch or otherwise having them on the other side to be able to mitigate some of those things. But I don't think you'd be able to answer those questions.
Maybe a question for the officer when we get to that. Any other questions to the applicant, please? No, thank you very much for taking time answering those questions. We will now move on to questions to the officers. So who wants to go first? I'm looking, councillor Stables got in there.
This is a question for Graham, actually. So this is about ecology. So I don't know if you can answer this actually as to why there isn't an ecology assessment. There hasn't been an ecology assessment done. Is it not something that is required for this type of application?
Excuse me, well, there's been a partial ecology assessment done for the bats. And they are the protected species and the species of principal importance in the terms. And that's what the assessment has tried to look into and tried to address issues regarding the bats.
Um so why hasn't a, a fuller ecology, given, given that the location of this is obviously very, very sensitive. It's n- next to, I mean, we've been there this morning, it's next to ancient woodland, which I haven't seen the like of, to be honest with you. And for those that weren't there, it is quite incredible. It is very, very dense. Ancient trees I haven't seen in any other part of Leeds. Um and given, you know, clearly we want to protect it as much as we can, why wouldn't it be necessary to do a further ecology assessment looking at the impact on birds, on insects and on mammals as well?
Uh, we, we took the view um within the nature team, the ecology section that the, the, any impacts on wildlife could be mitigated and reduced to an acceptable level with the suggested conditions that uh uh Andrew outlined in terms of um not having any light during the main period of activity for bats and for nesting birds and for uh other wildlife. And also having this, a scheme that has no impact on the surrounding area. So having a, a scheme that reduces the light level, so it's not for, not introducing an, any light level onto the ancient woodland uh or onto other bits of habitat that are su- that are um gonna be suitable for the individual bats.
Sorry, this is a, is a bit of a back and forth on this one. So um do we have, is there any research that's been done on where we've put floodlights in that shows any, the impact on wildlife? And is there any evidence that shows when mitigation has been put in to try to prevent light emission from leaking out from the direction that we intend it to be? Is there any research that shows how effective that is? Are you, what, what percentage leakage is there?
Uh well, we, we go off the, the looks contour maps. Uh so the, the lighting uh maps that are produced in support of the application and in support of the lighting design that, that it will be conditioned. And that will show, i- in conjunction with an ecologist, uh it'll work out the correct lighting design for the ecology, the, the surrounding areas. And that will show uh what we want to have. So no li- additional lighting impact onto those areas that are sensitive for wildlife. So there should be no lighting impact as shown by the, the contours of the uh, the lighting plans and the looks maps that illustrate the lighting impact from the actual scheme.
So do, do we know for sure then? I mean, is this a guarantee? Do we know for sure that there is zero light gonna go on to the ancient woodland? Is that what you're saying?
The, the lighting dis- the, the maps that have been produced at the moment indicate that the looks values are down to naught point five. So that's like a, a moonlit night. Um before it reaches the ancient woodland, um and that's been achieved with various technical things on the, the uh, the, the lights, I believe. Uh we'd be looking for similar kind of um shields on the, the lights that are on the northern part of the, the uh, the pitches to, to reduce that light spill, similar to what's down on the south of the pitches. We're also be looking at um the, the type of light in terms of its warmth, uh whether it's a warm light. So that's, that's less attractive to insects as opposed to uh the, the blue light, and that's on the spectrum. It's a, um, yeah, so, so the, we'd be looking at those contour plans to show there was no light spill onto the ancient woodland at all.
Right, this is just one, just one like final thing on that, just to clarify. So um you said no light spill in one sentence and said in the others, before that you just said that the light spill would be the same from the lights on the south side as they would, the north side as they would on the south side. So is it, is there some light spill, which spill, which is the same on the north side and the south side? Or is, or are you saying there is no light spill?
Um, the contour maps indicate there's no light spill onto the ancient woodland. That's, well, let me clarify, sorry. The, the lights, the last contour is at zero point five, uh going down from uh high levels on the pitch, down to zero point five like a moon, moonlit night. Um before it reaches the, the actual ancient woodland. Um and there's uh, there's trees, well, there's, there's all the vegetation in between before they get to the ancient, what's kind of the ancient woodland. So it doesn't show where there's actually zero um looks levels, but it's reducing in point five of a, each contour is point five of a looks level. So um it doesn't illustrate where there's none on, on the, on the uh ancient woodland, but the, the presumption is looking at the levels of the, the uh contour lines, that there's no lighting on the ancient woodland. And we would be looking from that lighting design strategy to show that there was no la- no lighting impact on the ancient woodland.
So we'll move on from this point now, but in short, basically by the time it gets to the ancient woodland, it's like it's a clear night with a big bright moon in it. Councillor Thir.
Thank you Chair. Uh, uh just, just to, well, I, I'll just say this, it's very, posit this question. Uh given what councillor Stables has said, do we want to be in opposition to the woodland trust, who are also saying that that information should be, have been provided? Um but my actual question is in relation to what has changed in the council's opinion in terms of where we were two years ago to where we are now? And if we have further information, what the capacity or demand from the community is, which was raised in the objections in relation to nearby John Charles and similar facilities?
Yeah, in terms of the, the application in twenty twenty-two, my understanding is that within the, the scheme, deducting was in place as part of those proposals. And there was a discussion at Plans Panel and a concern was expressed around the potential implications of lighting on the pitches. And so it was requested that the um conditions in the community use agreement reflect that concern um and re- request that the um, the pitches whilst the hours of use were acceptable. That, that it's only used within daylight hours within the parameters of those, those set hours. Um so in terms of what's changed, as I say, clearly there's a desire to optimise um use of the pitches through the community use agreement. And hence the application has come in to ensure that whilst you're still only working up until nine o'clock, um in hours, you know, when it's dusk at that time, it, it enables use of those pitches later on in the day. So I think that's essentially what's, what's changed since that initial time.
Thank you for that response. And the, the second que- uh, well, third question then as a result. I'm asked to the applicant about the situation with the layout and the amount of lights that they're using, the strength of the lights, et cetera. They weren't able to answer that question or provide information. So has the council therefore assessed as part of the, it does mention briefly, but how does that compare to pitches potentially in the council's ownership? And also in terms of potentially the quality of player, but more importantly, actually, are we over lighting these pitches?
Yes, I, I think your, your question was specifically around would lights on one side or the other um assist in terms of mitigating harms and so on. So I've, I've dealt with a number of similar pitch proposals in the past. And I think whilst I'm not a lighting expert, it's important to have um an even distribution of lux levels and lighting across individual, individual pitches. So I suspect the answer is you do need lighting all the way around both those tennis courts and the three G pitches. Um that as, that assessment has been looked at, so the lighting assessment has been looked at by environmental health colleagues and also our lighting um, uh lighting design colleagues who've looked at lighting proposals in terms of their impact more actually on residential amenity. So they're looking at, for instance, the, the impact on neighbouring properties to the north and to the west, rather than quality for sporting purposes. But they have said they meet industry standards, so they are, you know, we assume fit for purpose because that's, the applicant has used um, uh, you know, a, a lighting engineer to design a, an initial scheme. And from our perspective, from a council perspective, we're satisfied that there'll be no detrimental impact on residential amenity. That all said, um to, as a follow-up point to, to your question, um we will be seeking to tweak those lux levels to ensure that they do not impact on wildlife. So that would be, I suppose, in a way, the overriding consideration. Because unless you can discharge the condition for the lighting design strategy for bats, um it's difficult to see how we could otherwise um approve that scheme. But I think we're confident, and again, we've you, we've im- we've imposed that condition before another pitch application. So I think we're confident that that can be achieved as we have done elsewhere.
Councillor Rontry.
Uh thank you Chair. Um I'm back to paragraph seventy again, following the um questions I put as uh what's earlier. Um I'm just so anxious to be assured that a corner hasn't been cut here with the reference to um uh it's uh, uh not possible to wait until next, uh next summer. Uh I understand that uh, yeah, uh quite a lot of work has gone into the ecological surveys. Um are we saying that it's uh your judgment Graham that um this is of itself sufficient? And uh the fact that there's, that there's nothing missing here? Uh I'm just wondering that if there is like a sort of standard laid down and is not being observed uh in full this time, is that uh, uh is it normal to do, is it normal to do that if um, for, for any reason you think um it's not all necessary? Uh it just, I'm just wondering if there's a sort of pressure of time on this has led to uh things being left out. Thank you.
Thanks. Um yeah, so the um, we believe that the, the bat, any in- impacts on any bat activity will be uh mitigated by uh the restrictions on the lighting use. So no, no lighting at all during the uh periods of high bat activity during the summer months. Um so I mean, that, that's a, a restriction on other uh floodlit sports pitches that's been put elsewhere around the city.
Chair, just, just briefly for councillor Ontri's benefit, we would only ask le- uh ask for information that was relevant to the determination of the application. So it's not that unusual to go for a full ecology assessment. Because in this case, I think what Graham's trying to articulate is that we had enough information to alleviate our concerns. So no corners in that respect have been cut, if that helps.
Can I just follow up and just say that this is very standard practice? It's a preliminary ecological assessment which we're required to consider. If that's got sufficient detail in it, that's enough for the local planning authority. And clearly the ecology officer considers that is sufficient.
And I think just to add, obviously the officer's said that obviously they then have to discharge the condition, so it gets more technical later.
Thanks, that's uh, that's the assurance I was after, thank you.
Uh councillor Anderson.
If the ward members are correct and the residents are correct, but we've approved this application, what can be done if the mitigation doesn't work?
Uh d- sorry councillor, do you mean in terms of um impact?
Pollution's as bad as it said it is, and if the negative effects on ecology and various other things are as bad as said, and the other issues that the ward members have raised, if they come, if they are proven to be correct at the end, despite you putting in mitigation measures, what can be done to help the community?
I th- I think in that instance, again, it comes back to, so for example, the lighting design strategy for bats, because there'll be a cleared document, we'll, we'll have a series of mitigation measures in, which should then relate to a series of outcomes. So we'll be able to measure, so for instance, if somebody said, well, actually I can't believe those lux levels are what they say they should be in the document that we've discharged through a discharge of condition application, we could then take enforcement action against the school as, as applicant to ensure that those lux levels are reduced or the mitigation measures are put in place to um, you know, uh as per those approved plans. It's probably also worth um touching on the fact that I've also suggested a condition around um co- the complaints procedure. So again, we'd anticipate something which the school has signed up to, that we can say, well, actually, you, you need to be responding to these complaints in a timely fashion and set out exactly what you're going to do and the timescales within which you're going to do it. So that's again a further um way in for us to, to, to claw back matters. I'd also just mention in the community use agreement that was signed up on the original permission, there is actually a twelve month review clause in there as well. So if, for instance, there were some, some other impacts that cause significant concern, there is the ability for, to, to review matters through that community use agreement as well.
So the twelve month clause would be effective from day one that they've installed the, the lighting? Or it's not gonna, because what I'm getting at is it, does it run out, you know, after six months? Because we've had six months worth of.
I, I think because I have it with me. Um. Yeah, so the, so this is the community use agreement on the approved pitches as they are without any lighting. Um but nonetheless, it, you know, they still apply with, with lighting thereafter. Um so the agreement is to be reviewed on a regular basis by both parties at intervals of not less than twelve months. So that will have started from when those pitches came into first use in April.
Yes.
Just so there is a backstop if absolutely necessary. But just briefly, uh the conditions that Andy's referring to as well are actually covered on page thirteen at the bottom, which is basically condition four to seven, to ensure we've got more detail.
Any follow-up councillor Anderson? Uh councillor Stables? Oh unless you, yeah, councillor Stables?
Sorry, we're gonna go back to the lights again. So um yeah, you're quite right. Sort of that lights, going back to ecol- lights and ecology. Um so it might sound innocuous that we're now gonna have, we're talking about um the amount of light being emitted that is gonna be, be like um the full moon on a clear night. But is it not true that wildlife is far more sensitive to light than we are? And actually their behaviour change according to the fluctuations of the moon, whether it's waxing or waning, um in, in lots of different ways? And is it not true therefore that eve- just that if there's a constant light source around the perimeter of the woods where particular animals, insects, uh birds are nesting their habitat, that it would impact on that wildlife potentially in a negative way?
If there's no lighting impact onto um where, where, onto the ancient woodland, uh then there'd be no impact on the wildlife using that, that particular part of the, the habitat. If there is light spill onto other parts of uh habitat, then there could be negative effects. So it would, it would stop, it would discourage birds from nesting um and from bats from using the, any potential roost features. Um I think what they've said in this case, the ground level tree assessment, there's potential roost features for individual bats, um that currently uh the, the lux levels show would be impacted by the uh, the lights. Um again, the lighting design would be to reduce that to, to no impact. Uh or, and in addition to have uh some mitigation in terms of uh alternative roosted features for, for bats and for birds.
Sorry, just, just to help councillor Stables, if this is actually working?
Which is, obviously on this plan here, we can see the light spillage that we anticipate and the standoff distances.
Yeah.
This is the ancient woodland down here. So apart from that pinch point there, we actually have got nearly thirty-five metres across that boundary.
So it's not quite. across that boundary, so it's not quite hard up to it, as seems to have been suggested. So we're expecting, from what the information we've got so far, but it has to be covered by further condition, that the light spillage that supposedly meant to be like a moonlit night in summer or whenever, is there, but the ancient woodland is down here. Now, this is the point I was trying to make earlier about what Graham was saying about the, the, the impact. We, we believe from the ecology assessment that we have, that it's sufficient in information to make us comfortable, the impact, if any, will be absolutely minimal, simply because of the standoff distances. Okay?
Do you still want to come in councillor Stables?
Sorry.
So just to clarify then, so what we're saying is that we don't believe there's any, there's any impact on the actual ancient woodland. So the only impact area is actually that border area where there are some trees, from when we walked down earlier today, and there are some bat roosting trees identified within that area. So it's those, that area there that will be impacted, not the ancient forest.
Yes, that, that's, that's correct, yeah. In fact, it's the, 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 the bat roosts that would be impacted, I believe, on the north of the, from the lux levels on the north, northeast of the site, of the development.
So if it helps, I'll just refer back to this plan. So the, so the yellow are the, are the, are the trees which were assessed as having potential for bat roost, for single or small groups of bats, as opposed to the green, sorry, I'm not sure what you could say. As opposed to the green, which are the ones which are for the maternity roosts and larger hibernation. So they're, they're the most sensitive trees, which are quite some way away, so they're within the ancient woodland to the south or off beyond that buffer zone to the, to the west. So the trees that we're talking about, these yellow ones that you're referring to, so as we said earlier, the, the sensitivity that's identified in that ground-level tree report is particularly in relation to those three trees there which have some potential adjacent to the right of way to the north of the site. But as Graham said, we would, we would want the lighting design strategy to mitigate impact on that side. It ties in with an earlier comment you made around the, the shields to the lights as well. At the moment, the applicant has only proposed shields on the lighting on one side, so we would want shields on, lighting on both sides, in addition to all of the things that will be achieved through a lighting design strategy for bats. So the, so the contours, if you remember back to the previous slide, we'd want those poles well back away from those particular trees, and so that would result in a, in a neutral impact then.
Briefly, just paragraph six of your report, for a simple soul like me, what does it mean when it says the applicant proposes that these will be progressed? That's the other test, that's the other studies, will be progressed during the up and coming twenty twenty-five season, with a view to making a formal application to extend the floodlit use if results are favourable. In the meantime, it's proposed to limit the use to, and then on the top of page fifteen it sets out, what would the hours potentially be if the surveys come out spot on, bang on? What sort of hours might we be asked to adjudicate on?
Yes, so the, the purpose of, of, is at the moment, as we've said, with the information we have, we're comfortable with those hours of, of use. What they would need to do in order to convince us that floodlighting of the pitches is acceptable in the height of summer is to do those full bat transect surveys, which is what that paragraph is referring to. So only when we've seen those, assessed those, may have even wanted some, some changes to the, a further lighting design strategy for bats, then we might consider that that scheme's acceptable potentially. In terms of hours of use, the hours of use would be the same. So it would be a nine PM cutoff, the same as, as at present, but it would just enable floodlighting within those, within those times and at those times of year currently excluded.
Okay, any other questions from members to officers? Councillor Manaka.
Thank you, Chair. To the officer quickly, you know, when councillor Anderson mentioned about the backstop, is it, is it part of what was coming out from the residents to say you will, if there is bound to be impact on the, you know, on the owls and, and, you know, the birds themselves, you would stop and reassess? Is that, is that you now addressing that part of the residents' consent?
Sorry, I'm just gonna have a look at the paragraph quickly for you. Page eighteen at the top. I think that will be a bullet point. Page eighteen.
So apologies, have you got the paragraph number?
Sorry, flowing over to eighteen.
Yes, no, I follow you. In terms of whether a request is made that there'll be no impact on owls and so on, so as I said earlier, the, the lighting design strategy should ameliorate all of those issues in terms of impact on, on bats, and therefore by extension, birds, including owls and other wildlife. So if, in the event that development was carried out and they didn't implement the measures, because we would know exactly what those measures are, and we would know what the lux levels are, and we would have a further plan, a bit like the contours plan we're looking at before, we'd have the assurance there, because we could only then know, this is acceptable, there is no impact. If they don't implement it in accordance with those approved details, we have the, the ability to then take enforcement action as required.
Any follow-up councillor? Any other questions to officers? Right, moving on to comments then, please. Comments, members? Who wants to go first, if anyone? Councillor Anderson.
I'll be honest, I'm in a quandary over this one. The comment I would make is, I don't think it's helped them in the lack of proper consultation in terms of working with the ward members. You know, I think that might have helped their case, but better if they'd worked with them to look through potential solutions. But I am in a general quandary over this. I can see the pros and I can also see the cons from local people's perspectives.
Any other comment? Councillor Stables?
Similar, actually. So, you know, I am absolutely for encouraging more active sport and communities to get involved in sport. So I'm a bit, we, we've heard conflicting information in terms of the necessity of these floodlit pitches. So on the one hand, we hear that there is, and I, I believe it, you know, that there is two, there is demand, more demand than supply currently across Leeds and in this area. But then we also know that there are more pitches coming on stream very, very soon in the, in Holback, you know, and from ward, ward members that they don't believe there's, there is demand for these additional pitches. So I'm not sure whether, I'm unsure as to whether this is needed or not. And if it isn't needed, then it seems the wrong thing to do, because although I hear all the mitigation that's going in, and I really appreciate that, and I can hear that a lot of time and effort has been put into this mitigation, I still am sure that there will be some impact on wildlife. You know, bats don't, not a hundred percent of bats are going to be hibernating between those months when we've got floodlit pitches till nine o'clock. And it will have impact undoubtedly on the insects and things that are around that area, which has further impact, obviously, on, you know, if you reduce the insects, particularly moths, you reduce therefore the, the birds that, you know, like owls that rely on them. So that, I'm sure there will be some, well, there undoubtedly will be some impact on the local ecology. So I'm a bit in a quandary as well, because I can, because I don't know if there is really demand or not.
Any other comments from members? Councillor Parham?
Ditto with the other two councillors, I'm in a quandary as well. I would have liked to see more consultation with the ward members. I am concerned, due to the, due to our limitations on enforcement, that if, you know, I'm happy if those lights can go off at those set times, if there's a timer mechanism or something, but the idea that we just leave it to the school to switch off, I'm, I'm worried about that. Again, I'm also concerned about the need in the area, but I think it's, it's good to see kids playing sport, and that's really important. And obviously, the officers have recommended approval. So if we can somehow build in, you know, a definite cut off to those lights, I don't know if it's technically possible, then I'm kind of minded to approve it, to be honest.
Councillor Parham, just, just briefly, I'd made a note of that anyway, which I was going to suggest at the summing up at the point we got to the vote, but I think we do need a bit more certainty on condition four for that particular point. I had made a note that when Andy goes back after here, we should get a positive resolution that condition four is strengthened to ensure that we have a mechanism, whether it be automatic or the caretaker, whomever it is, to make sure those lights are actually switched off. Okay?
councillor Jones.
As most people who have anything to do with football will know, there is a shortage of pitches across the city. We are seeing repeatedly pitches being used three and four times over the weekend. I think this goes, or possibly could go somewhere to mitigate in some of that. But, and it is a but, I am slightly in a quandary over how this application works and what appears to be a lack of certainty about how certain, turning the lights off and this, I am concerned about that. So that's, that's, that's what it is. But without any doubt, there is a shortage of, of pitches for June. I meant to say, where I live now, there's thirty-five teams, and we have teams playing eight, nine miles away from, from the base. This would go somewhere to mitigate in that, hopefully.
councillor Thirft.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I think we're all in the same boat. We're all struggling to know which way to paddle. Because I think that, one question I did not ask to the applicant, which I should have done, is that there is a football pitch, AustraTurf football pitch, or Weather Football Pitch, with floodlights already on the campus of the school, and the usage of that and the community usage, and I forgot to ask that question.
I did ask that question, she didn't have the answer.
All right, I apologize, I apologize for not listening and getting the answer. So there is a concern with the lack of information about the actual demand for this particular facility. I understand councillor Jones's point about extra pitches, but that does not mean that we then ride over a rough shot, all the other environmental things that we need to talk about. You know, we've all, I've been involved in one particular campaign concerning some new pitches that are going to be built near Thorpe Park, for example. And I think that that's where it's about the context. We all, I loved playing football in the fact of, and having the chance to play late night, but the question is, is this the right location? And the problem I have is that these lights were not installed when those pitches or tennis courts were built. They've only been in operation for less than a year, and it wasn't very clear to say why now, just a few months on since they opened.
Any other comments from members before I make my comments? So, in making, and I obviously don't normally make comments unless I feel there's a need to on this, I think there's always, always clearly been an intention for lights to come on this site of a wise way add ducks, and let's not fool ourselves about that. Whatever application comes before, you don't put stuff in unless you've got an intention of doing it at some point because it costs money. We'll put that point to one side and the significant additional cost of time that comes with it. The point of this is, if this had come to panel with the request for lights, I think, I think the honest answer is, it would have probably been approved with those lights at the time. And the fact that they've come as a separate application shouldn't, should, should obviously be consideration because it's become, but I think from my point of view, and I wasn't on the panel at the time this came, the likelihood is that I would have probably, with the original application, if lights had come, I would have probably passed it through, because I think the evidence has been put forward by officers that there is significant benefit in terms of the additionality to it. I don't think it's helpful how this has come to the panel. It would probably have been helpful for more consultation and more conversation, but again, the applicant is not obliged to do that. It is the council that is obliged to put a notice out. And we have to make a determination on how we feel the application's come to us, but actually what is in front of us with the expert advice we have received from officers. Now, we have to be very clear, if we are going against the advice of the ecology officer, that we have significant grounds to disagree with them. And though with some of us have raised concerns, I haven't heard significant grounds to disagree with the information we have been given. We have approved similar schemes like this in other areas. There has been, I think there's a very clear point around the conditionality which has been put forward, which we need to make sure is tight on the timing. But if I'm honest, if these lights had been with the previous application, I, my, my take on it is, I would still probably vote for it if I'd have been on this panel. And so the fact that they've come separately, as unhelpful as that may be, doesn't take away from the fact that there is a strong planning case for approval that I think would be very hard to not defend if we were to refuse. But that's my comments on it. Councillor Stables, councillor Thirft and the councillor Parham, and then I think we need to see who, if we've got a proposer.
Sorry. So from the last planning application, condition four, no external lighting other than low-level safe, like, safety lighting can be installed in accordance with the approved plans in the interest of residential amenity and highway safety. That was actually from the last planning application.
I just want to say one thing, Chair. I just want to contest that point that you particularly raised there about that any application coming forward was intended to have lights, was councillor Stables has just said it's in the minutes about this was used for daylight hours, there was no mention of floodlights. So I don't think that's correct. I can see your other points about information, but that particular point is not substantiated.
Can I, can I just ask for some caution now? You've got an application before you. What predates that, whilst it can be material, is irrelevant. This application is for floodlighting, and it's that application that you should be considering. The whatfalls, you know, the architecture around how it came about, what, what the council submitted, I think it's not, you're not going to get any mileage with that in terms of the planning considerations that you need to have this. You should be aware of it, absolutely, but it's this application that you need to consider on its merits and these merits alone.
So, on the basis of the application before us, do I have anyone to propose the officer recommendation? Councillor Jones and councillor Parham? So we have a proposer and a secondar, so just, just confirm, Steve, before we go to a vote, bearing in mind we were talking about some of the conditions.
The application has put forward a recommendation for approval, but subject to the alterations to condition number four, to ensure that we have a concrete, that's the wrong term, but anyway, we have a definite cut-off point as to when the lights, or a mechanism for ensuring the lights are cut off at a specific time, as specified.
Are members clear on what they will now be voting on? I'll take no suggestion. All those for? All those against? Abstentions? Two. Two. Okay, just to confirm the vote for me, please, Steve.
The application has been approved as an officer recommendation, but with the alterations to condition number four, to ensure a mechanism for the lights being switched off as specified in the, the timing condition. Thank you, Chair.
We're just going to take a very quick five-minute break, just because we need to check something about one of the next applications. So if you need to grab yourself a coffee, grab a coffee now. Thank you for that, colleagues. Item number eight, outline planning application landscaping reserved only for the demolition of buildings and development of residential accommodation, use class C3 along with access parking vehicular circulation, boundary treatment and landscaping at the land at Town Street, Stanley Leeds, LS 286HU. Can I ask the officers to present the application, please?
Thank you, Chair. So this is an outline application for 36 houses and four apartments. It's been referred to plans panel at the request of councillor Kevin Ritchie on the basis of concerns that the proposal provides no affordable housing, no on-site public green space and a below policy off-site green space commuted sum. This is due to viability issues which will be explained in more detail later. Verbal update, we've received three late representations, one objection, one general comment and one in support of the scheme. Comments in summary were that public right of way should not be rerouted to Fern Terrace Arthur Street for safety privacy reasons. The site area has been reduced by a third with a view to using the other third as a McDonald's. Housing needs to take priority over another food outlet. There's no consideration of other developments nearby or the cumulative traffic impact of those. There was a query about a local plans council comment received on the 28th of January. That was a publishing error and that's been removed now. And there was one support comment that said the scheme will improve the area, increase jobs and add value. I just want to draw attention to the recommendation in the officer report where it says for the section 106 agreement to the contribution, the contribution offered is actually 98,670,000 towards off-site green space, not 95,500. Okay, so this is an aerial view of the site edged in red. The site has an area of 1.57 hectares. As you can see, the area to the north of the site is predominantly residential. And there is the West Leeds Silk Specialist School directly to the east. To the south, on the other side of Town Street, there are three storey commercial buildings. There's a jet petrol station just down there as well. Further along Town Street to the west is the Lidl supermarket, which is about 400 metres away from the site. So the site is in a sustainable location. And to the southwest corner is a public house known as the Jug and Barrel. And next to that are some commercial uses, including a bus depot warehouse and storage yard. The closest public green spaces are up in the top right corner of Stanley Park, that's about 0.6 miles away. And then this strip to the west is natural green space. That's Farsley Beck and that's about 150 metres from the site. This is a zoomed in view of the existing site. Here you can see approximately half of the site was used as a scrap metal works, although this use has now ceased. Half of the site remains allocated as a safeguarded waste management site. However, the environmental permit has been revoked by the EA and the site is not considered viable for waste management use due to historic complaints of noise disturbance from local residents. The previous use has relocated to a new site now as well and the proposed use is considered more compatible for the area. The only businesses in operation on the site at present are the sales yard and office for the sale of concrete garages and sheds which we saw and it's highlighted in yellow on the slide there at the site visit. And then the small yellow square here is Premier House. That is a dwelling that's going to be retained and given its own private garden. The parcel of land next to Arthur Street, that's the area here, the square to the west, is currently empty land next to a residential area of brick houses and stone terraces and the land slopes down from east to west. The wider site also has a large change in land levels of approximately eight metres, starting from Town Street in the southeast corner and sloping back up to Arthur Street at the west. A public footpath runs along Vickersdale, which is there, and then all the way up to the top corner of the site, back down and round next to the school. And the boundary treatments there are generally high breeze block walls with barbed wire fencing. The Leeds Bradford City Cycle Connect Circle Way runs across the front of the site. So these are just some pictures of the site to give you a flavour of what it's like. This is from Town Street at the south of the site. The building that you can see there is one of the former Infinity Metals warehouses that is proposed to be demolished. And you can just see on the picture to the right, the building behind the billboard is the Jug and Barrel Pub. And you can see the bus stop and the cycle superhighway there. And just in the distance, you can see the Lidl supermarket. These are some pictures of the site. So the big house to the right is Premier House, that's to be retained. And then to the left is just showing some images of the previous scrapyard, the garage sales and some of the woodwork buildings that are on site. And all of those other buildings are all proposed to be removed. This is a view of the parcel of land to the west from Arthur Street. So you can see how just on the other side, there's the former scrap metal warehouse that's been semi-disassembled and causes several complaints at the minute about noise from it banging in the wind. You can also see that the area is quite varied in character. So we've got stone buildings, we've got a mix of different types of brick and there are some warehouses still nearby too. These are some of the existing footpaths around the site and the applicant has committed to improve these by resurfacing, widening, removing vegetation and opening them up to make them feel a lot safer. Okay, so this slide shows the proposed site plan. Access will come off the existing access off Town Street down there to the south and a new adoptable street will be formed, including the introduction of street trees on the entrance to create more attractive and green sense of place upon entering the development. Then there are a mix of level surface type four secondary roads and two private roads that branch off the main new streets. Access to the two pairs of semi-detached dwellings to the west here will come off Arthur Street and then they have their own private drives. And the layout overall includes two and three storey buildings, a mix of terraced, semi-detached and detached dwellings. Front gardens are generally open with medium sized private rear gardens, placing an emphasis on the main entrance of the properties and providing good levels of surveillance. Car parking is a mix of driveways to the side, garages and car parking spaces to the front as well. And we've been through several revisions of the layout to reduce the amount of frontage parking and it's now considered an adequate balance has been achieved. As shown, the development does not provide any on-site public green space. There are some small strips of incidental amenity landscaping, but this is not considered usable public green space. So the provision is a commuted sum of 98,670 pounds to be allocated towards green space enhancement at Stanley Park in consultation with board members and Parks and Countryside. This will be secured via a section 106 agreement. The policy requirement is for a contribution of 122,604. So the proposal is not policy compliant in this regard, but this is due to viability issues which will be discussed later. And we do have a representative from the logistic valuer who can answer any questions about that as well later. However, the proposal is also proposing to spend 105,000 pounds on improvements to 300 metres of public footpaths around the site, which the applicant is also citing as one of the reasons why they can't pay the full off-site green space contribution. The existing western public footpath will be widened and incorporated into the new internal street layout from plot nine all the way to the north. The eastern public right of way will be widened and vegetation cut back and the site boundaries will be low timber knee rails with houses having windows orientated to overlook the public right of way to increase natural surveillance and make the footpath feel safer for pedestrians. And then there's a new public footpath proposed here next to the J Miles Warehouse between Arthur Street and the houses. This will provide some additional landscaping to the area and it also supports the site drainage strategy. So overall, it's considered that these footpath improvements will support promotion of active modes of transport locally into around the site and improve the appearance and feelings of safety around the site. The next slides are some examples of the proposed house types. So this is an example of house type J, which is the four bedroom dwelling with garage. All dwellings are proposed to be constructed of a red and darker tonal brick, which is similar to the brick used in the local area, with brick sills and heads to add visual interest. And roofs are proposed to be a slate grey thin leading edge concrete tile. The proposed housing mix is two one-bedroom flats, two two-bedroom flats, 12 two-bedroom houses, eight three-bedroom houses and 16 four-bedroom houses, which is 40 dwellings. The development provides a good mix of dwelling sizes which conforms with the preferred housing mix in policy H4. There's a slight under provision of flats when assessed against H4, which seeks a mix of 75% houses, 25% flats, but officers consider the proposal is broadly compliant with policy H4 as the mix is appropriate by size and there is some mix in terms of type offered. This is an example of another four bed detached house. And the dark grey panels on top of the roof there to indicate solar panels. So all dwellings will use solar panels to meet CIT reduction targets of policy EN2. They'll also be built with a high standard of building fabric insulation. And sanitary wear for baths, sinks, toilets will be below the 100 litres per day as required by policy EN1. This is an example of one of the two bed house layouts. All houses meet nationally designed space standards and the gardens all meet sizes as required by the neighbourhoods of the living guide. And then this last one is an example, well, this is the proposed apartment block. So this is to show how they've been designed on a kind of low rise scale to look like the houses as well. And that will have four apartments in it. Again, PBs will be installed to meet EN2 policy requirements. This provides an indicative view just of how the houses will look together as blocks. So there is a mix of two and three storey properties, which is consistent with the local area where there are some two and three storey properties. And there's some variation in heights of roofs to add interest. Because of the variation of levels of the site, there will be a number of retaining walls and like terraced areas. So they've all been designed and the design officer is happy with the proposed scale and mix of two and three stories. And then finally, this is a sketch visual of the entrance when approaching from Town Street. That's just to give a bit of a view of scale, how materials might look and to show the new entrance with the street trees. So in summary, the proposal will provide 40 new dwelling houses on a brownfield site which was previously used for scrap metal, which has generated numerous complaints from residents in the past. The new residential use is considered to align better with the area's increasing residential nature and is supported in principle. There are no concerns in relation to design, character or highway safety. The development will provide a significant biodiversity net gain, because it's all basically hard standing now, of 325% and improve existing footpaths. There won't be any public open space on the site, but a commuted sum of 98,670 pounds is proposed to mitigate against this. The big issue here though is that the scheme lacks affordable housing deviating from policy H5, which requires 15% affordable housing or a commuted sum. So the applicant's viability assessment shows a policy compliance scheme would be unviable. It would generate a profit of about 10%, I think, from memory, which is not acceptable, an acceptable return for the developer. However, from reducing down the policy requirements for section 106 contributions, they've said that a 98,670 off-site contribution for green... they've said that a £98,670 off-site contribution for green space, full sill but no affordable housing, would give them a 17.4% profit, which is less than they would usually accept. But they are prepared to accept that for this, to develop this site. They've also agreed to enter into a late-stage review mechanism, which you'll know is referred to as an overage clause as well. So this is an outline application, although there's only landscape matters to be considered at reserve matter stage. So they're willing to enter into it at a later stage to re-review the viability, should it be more profitable than they've forecast now, that profits would be shared with the council to go towards affordable housing. So as we do with all applications that present viability issues, we've commissioned the district valuer to carry out an independent review. The district valuer has concluded that a fully policy-compliant scheme isn't viable. But a scheme with no affordable housing and Section 106 contributions slightly less than offered by the developer of £95,500,000 and full sill could be viable. So Simon Croft is kindly attending on behalf of the district valuer if you have any questions on this matter. So in conclusion, it's considered the benefits of the scheme outweigh the harms and therefore on balance, it's considered acceptable subject to the recommended conditions and signing of a Section 106 agreement. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. We have objectives to the application. Can I invite councillor Ritchie to please come to the front? You will have four minutes once you begin.
Good afternoon. Just before I start, can I just say that I'll be using an acronym during my input, PRO for Public Rights of Way. So it just saves a bit of time having to repeat Public Rights of Way. And I'm speaking on behalf of the three ward councillors and Mr Hodgson as well. I'm incorporating his points. Okay, so we support the principle of housing on this brownfield site, particularly as its former use has caused a multitude of problems over a number of years for local residents. One of those problems is water runoff from the site on the eastern boundary. I'd like assurance this is being addressed. I'm aware it was an objection point which is omitted from the report and would be detrimental to the PRO on that side if not addressed. I do partly welcome the PROs which improves connectivity throughout the site, creates a safer environment around the site. But I would propose, and I hope members will explore, why the full extent of the PROs to the three main entry points is not being delivered. It seems a missed opportunity to create full accessibility and connectivity throughout the site, real place making which is a Leeds ambition. The report states at point 40 about the improvements which the planning officer mentioned, but it's not entirely accurate without delivering resurfacing of the PROs in full. I'd also like reassurance the trees adjacent to the PRO, particularly on the eastern boundary, which could impact properties at the neighbouring half-mile or appropriate species, bearing in mind the need to maintain the openness and surveillance of the PRO and the potential impact on residential amenity if they grow too big. The lack of affordable housing is a huge disappointment considering our policies and ambitions in Leeds to deliver affordable housing. But I recognise the weight members have to give to the district valuer's report in these circumstances and welcome the safety net of the overage clause for affordable housing should profits exceed the pre-agreed amount. Regarding the lack of onsite green space, I appreciate the work undertaken during the pre-app stage leading to a reduction in units on the site and the improved layout. Considering the overall benefits of developing the site and in conjunction with the district valuer's appraisal, I do feel the proposal for an off-site contribution to Stanley Park is appropriate and welcomed. However, I am disappointed there's a 24k shortfall in the planning obligation contribution. I would ask members to push for this full contribution. Members will know the difference which will make to the local community by enabling us to invest in that Stanley Park. The full contribution would enable us to redevelop the children's play area which is long overdue. It will benefit the new occupants of this development and enhance the marketability of this site for the developer. I expect 24k is a negligible amount in the context of the 17.5% profit margin, but it would make a significant positive difference to the community, including the new residents. In relation to that point, although not relevant to today's determination, for context, I would like to highlight the parcel of land taken out of the original iteration and its impact on this application. A public consultation held in December indicated this is likely to come forwards as an application for a drive-through McDonald's restaurant. As a result, the viability of this site has likely been affected by that and led to the shortfall in planning obligations. This action could be seen as a way to circumvent the planning obligations for this application, which I feel is morally and ethically wrong and not in the public interest. I also regret there's been an absence of community consultation from the developer for this site, but I'm grateful to our planning officer for keeping ward members informed throughout the process, which has led to many positive changes before coming to panel. Members, in conclusion, notwithstanding the aforementioned concerns over lack of affordable housing, I would fully support this application, or we would fully support this application with two additions, namely the shortfall to satisfy the requirements of the off-site green space and our suggested augmentation to the PRO proposals. This would deliver a satisfactory development, which I'm sure the local community would welcome. So I would urge deferral for further negotiations on those points.
Thank you very much for that. Questions to the objectors, councillor Parnham and then councillor Firth?
Councillor Ritchie, thank you very much for your presentation. I just wonder if you could say a little bit more about a couple of things. One is the PROs, augmenting the PROs that you mentioned on the site, just so that the panel a little bit more, so we can make sure that that's taken up by the officers. And the second one was the appropriate tree species you mentioned. I don't know if you could say which species, if any, have come to mind or not, but that might be useful for us.
Thank you. I'll speak on the public right of ways. I did wonder if it should be PRO or PRO, but then I thought, was it tomato-tomato? I went for PRO. So what I'm suggesting is, if you look on the, I don't know if, is that the picture? I can't see with my long, these are short-range glasses. There are three entry points to the site. Vickersdale, half-mile and then half-mile close slash half-mile green. And with the proposals as put to you, the sort of the last section to those three entry points will not be made good. There won't be tarmac. So they'll be going from a lovely tarmac path, which we welcome, to what's currently there now, which becomes a bit of a mud bath. And it's an access route for the schools, not just the silk but also people going to the Pudsey Schools, the Stanley Schools. So it just seems very short-sighted not to run the full extent of those public rights of way. And on the trees, I'll pass to Mr Hodgson, who's, I'm not a tree expert.
Good afternoon. There was a couple of trees on the sort of north-eastern section, just south of where the detached dwelling is going to be, that we're not really sure how big that they're going to be. Or I can't work out what species they are. And what we're concerned about is that over time they'll grow and overshadow the local properties in a detrimental way. Part of the adjacent property is an allotment-type garden. So that's quite a concern. And if I can just go back to councillor Ritchie's point about the public rights of way. In one of your photographs that you showed at the start, there was a lot of water running down between the walls. And that runs out, that's the one. And that continuation comes out on half-mile. And when there's heavy rain, you get standing water all the way down the path. And there's mums and tocs and prams and walking. And so it becomes unviable to actually use it in really bad weather. So we'd like to see that addressed, just to enforce councillor Ritchie's point about the extensions.
Yeah, just to add again around the tree on the boundary, just getting back to that important surveillance and openness of the public right of way and, you know, minimising the impact on that, which is really crucial and welcomed as part of the application.
Any follow-up councillor?
Could you just point out which of those footpaths are flooding? Is it two out of the three? Is that right?
It's, that's the one that runs north to south. So it starts at Town Street, which is, if you look at the middle photograph, that continues up to Town Street, which is at sort of 25 past one. And it goes through to half-mile itself.
Thank you, yeah. So are officers aware of which those paths are?
We can point it, but maybe ask a specific question when we get to the offices, because we're at the questions to the objectors stage, please.
Okay, thanks very much for that.
Councillor Firth?
Thank you Chair, and thank you for your very succinct presentation, gentlemen. I just wanted to ask, you mentioned in relation to the water drain and that's already been covered, so I don't need to ask about that. You've said that you also have had limited engagement or consultation from the developer. Can I just ask what consultation has taken place or what information has been provided by the developer that has meant that some objections have come in? For example, there is the mention of the original 79 homes that may have been proposed. Or is that simply through the hard work of local residents trying to find out that information? And have you actually tried to approach the developer and they not be forthcoming? Or is it the simple fact that there's not been any engagement?
Thanks councillor. So there's been lots of engagement with the ward members and our planning officer, who's worked really hard and kept us fully updated. And we've made comments throughout the process, including reducing the original number, et cetera, et cetera. I did speak to the planning officer about the lack of, how it'd benefit from a community consultation, which I'm sure she'll have fed back to the developer. But I didn't have a direct contact for the developer and I don't think it's appropriate for elected members to contact developers directly without offices. So I'd have been willing and able to meet with the planning officer, the developer at any time or would have welcomed a community consultation, which the other parcel of land have managed to, prior to an application even being submitted.
I won't discuss about your decision there not to approach the developer directly, but I do think it is disappointing that there hasn't been that consultation. But there is the further mention that you hint there to a potential plan of a McDonald's. Where has that come from? Has that come from officers or is that actually a live planning application, pre-app? Or where has that originally come from?
So as part of the planning process, the parcel of land was taken out. At that time, we were told for likely future commercial development. And then a couple of weeks before Christmas, via Facebook, there were flyers advertised for a public consultation for a potential new McDonald's drive-through on that site, which as I say, came to us on Facebook. So obviously, we attended that public consultation and I made it clear to McDonald's, or the representatives of that future development, that it was my disappointment that they'd not contacted the ward members initially. So yeah, we're still waiting for a planning application to come forward, but that's in the public domain, that's their future intentions. But as I said in my contribution, I know it's not relevant to today's, before anyone from legal or the offices tick me off.
Yeah, and just to remind members that you're here to decide what's before you today, not what might happen in the future. Any follow-up councillor? Any other questions to the objectors? No? Thank you very much for your time and answering those questions. We do have a speaker on behalf of the applicant, Helen Rogers, the planning agent. If you'd like to come up to the front, your four minutes will begin once you start speaking. Thank you.
Good afternoon, members, and thank you for the opportunity to present the scheme to members today. The site on which this application sits is currently a neighbourly, it's unsightly, it's a nuisance and it's an incompatible use. And this has led to the many historic conflicts with the residents and with the numerous amenity issues. The site is an existing brownfield site. It's in a highly sustainable location, meaning it's highly appropriate for redevelopment for housing, particularly within regeneration priority area. The scheme we're asking you to term in today brings about many benefits and it will transform the site. It will bring delivery of a variety of new homes across one, two, three and four beds, delivering new homes within the regeneration priority area. It will remove a nuisance and incompatible use, provide a much more appropriate and neighbourly use and significantly improve the amenity of the surrounding residents and positively contribute to the surrounding area. As previously mentioned, there's significant improvements to the public rights of way surrounding the site and through the site. And with the increased natural surveillance of these routes, it will create a safer environment, increased use of these routes and increasing accessibility and permeability through the site, a benefit to new and existing residents. There's substantial improvements to biodiversity across the site, over 3,000% increase in BNG. The scheme will deliver well-designed, high-quality buildings in keeping with the surrounding area. It will include low-carbon technologies and PV, including PV panels. The scheme will deliver a new residential population, generating additional spending in the area, council tax revenue, new jobs through construction and still payments to help local infrastructure. As mentioned, there has been a viability assessment submitted and that's been agreed with the Leeds City Council's district valuer, who has agreed the scheme is not viable. The scheme will deliver the maximum contributions it can do and that includes the public rights of way improvements over 300 metres surrounding the site, which will have monetary value of around £112,000. It would deliver £98,000 towards off-site green space to the Stanley Park about 250 metres from the site. And the applicant will provide a late-stage review mechanism prior to practical completion. Therefore, if the profitability proves of the scheme, the affordable housing could be increased. So in summary, the development would deliver a range of planning benefits. Leeds City Council officers have deemed it acceptable in all other environmental and technical matters and it accords to the development plan as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So questions to members, I have councillor Firth and then I have councillor Jones.
Thank you Chair, and thank you for your presentation. Given there is the promise to deal with some of the footpaths and to be able to open them up, but there is also a possibility of relaying the tarmac and making them more presentable. Can I ask, what plans have you got to assess the rumours and objections of water damage that's being caused and obviously clearly shown by the conditions, rather than the fact that it just be dealt with on one instance and then left and then it would probably be for the taxpayer to have to pick up the price later on down the line when it needs repairing?
And so a drainage report has been submitted as part of the application and that should include everything within the red line. That's been deemed acceptable by the council's officers, technical officers in terms of drainage within the red line boundary. Any further details that may be required in terms of drainage on the public rights of way? Happy to be conditioned.
Did you say you were happy to be conditioned, did you say?
I believe there may be a drainage condition already, if the further details are required. But that should, any drainage within the red line boundary would be included as part of that.
Condition 21 councillor Firth?
Absolutely, thank you. On a second point, do QUAD represent the developer or landowner for the entire site, including the site next door?
I don't think that's a relevant question councillor Firth. You're here to determine the application in front of you, know what potential will happen with the other piece of land.
My question was Chair, in relation to public consultation. And the fact, the reason I think is a valid point of information to know is the fact that if potentially it's the same landowner that owns the whole of the site, why there has been a consultation for a potential other application, but no public consultation for the site that's actually being proposed?
I would suggest you rephrase that to why have you not done a consultation for this piece of land and the other piece of land is not relevant to this application?
Thank you Chair. So can I ask as a result, why has QUAD or any of your developers or your client not committed to any public consultation with members of the public or residents? Or with the ward members?
And so that was a decision made by the applicant. The principle, the scheme will deliver many benefits to surrounding neighbours. It removes that nuisance use. Housing has been supported on this site previously. With the many benefits that it did deliver, it wasn't... With the many benefits that it did deliver, it wasn't, members, oh sorry, members and surrounding residents had the opportunity to be consulted as part of the planning application process, and that's what's being carried out, so that they can present their views and comments at that time.
Any follow-up councillor?
If the, if your client is keen to hear from the public, why wasn't, why aren't you keen to then consult them? In an actual consultation to get buy-in, and ensure that you can understand that site, and ensure its full impacts and circumstances, that it's currently having an impact on the community around it?
And that's, that's a decision made by the applicant, we can advise applicant, we're not the, we can't make those decisions. But given the many benefits that this scheme will deliver to the surrounding residents, we consider it would be supportive by residents.
Chair, just briefly, you want to?
Yeah, so I mean, we won't concentrate on the consultation point any further, I think the point's been made, but again, members are advised, there is no requirement for the applicants to do external consultation outside of the planning process. So do you have another question that's not related to that, before I move on to councillor Jones, councillor Firth?
I'll let councillor Jones.
There we go, councillor Jones.
So, thank you.
Sorry councillor Jones, briefly, just to further qualify the Chair's point, the statements of community involvement recommends consultation with the local community on any application, but it's only recommendation, it's not compulsory?
Thank you, thank you Chair, and thank you for the presentation. I refer to page forty-five, item forty-three. It says that the new internal adopable street is to be formed. Does that mean that that road will be adopted straight away, or will there be a delay? Secondly, it says there's two private roads will branch off the main access. Can I ask who will be responsible for the upkeep of those, please?
So the new internal adoptable road that will be made, handed over to the council when the scheme has been completed, and to, sorry, what was the, the second question is whether the two roads will remain private?
The two, no, the two private roads, who will be responsible for the upkeep of those?
I don't have the answer to that question at the moment.
Maybe one for the officers, because when we get to that. Any other questions to the applicant, councillor Parnham?
Thank you very much for your presentation. I know the, I know the area, and I like the design, the layout, so really, it's just a couple of things, going back to councillor Ritchie's presentation, if you remember what he was talking about, the prow, and then the trees. I know you can't necessarily guarantee anything, but representing the developer, do you think the developer might be open to opening a dialogue with elected members like councillor Ritchie, just to see if the, you can explore extending those prow's to really make it a good accessible space for local residents? And maybe the choice of the trees, do you think that's something that's possible?
So the, the public rights of way within the site boundary will be upgraded as part of this application. They may be open to, well, I'd have to refer to my client before I can say whether they're open to upgrading any further works, but the upgrades will be within the red line boundary itself. In terms of the street trees, landscaping details will come forward at later stage, and would be welcome to any recommendations from the council's technical officers on relevant species that would be appropriate for that area.
Any follow-up councillor? Any other questions to the applicant? No? Thank you very much for that, so moving to questions to officers, please. So any questions to officers, councillor Jones?
To repeat what I've just said. Forty-five, item forty-three, the, the timescale for adoptable, when the road will be adopted, I'm interested, but also the two private roads which will branch off the main access, who will be responsible for the upkeep of those?
Timescales for adoption, well, the developer would enter into a section thirty-eight agreement, and then that, that is then monitored by the council through construction. Once it's completed, then they would enter into a twelve-month maintenance period, where it's monitored again for any defects that might grow out of that, before it would be adopted by the council. So I can't, I couldn't give you specific timescale, it's all dependent on build rates, et cetera, and how the agreements progress. The private streets that they're proposing here, typically when these things come about, it would be the, the owners of those houses who would be responsible for the, for the upkeep of those, those areas.
Yeah, I remain very uncomfortable with the answer, to be honest, because what we're seeing repeatedly across the city, and I know that Paul's going to tell me off for saying that, but I can live with that. But I'm, I'm concerned that it could be ten years, fifteen years before they adopt it, and that is not unusual across the city. So I'm, I'm concerned also about the private piece, is that I'm not convinced.
What's the question councillor Jones?
The question is, I'm not convinced of the answer, it's very simple.
I mean, that's not technically a question, but there you go. Any other questions to officers? Councillor Parnham?
Just looking at it now, the, the design plan, I'm thinking refuse wagons. Any concerns regarding access, if vehicles are left on the street?
In answer to that, there have been, there has been a sweatpath assessment for refuse vehicles, and they can enter in forward gear, turn around, and exit as well.
Sorry, just very quick, does that include vehicles parked, like residents' cars parked on the street when you do that?
Typically, no it wouldn't, no. I mean, if people block the street, then they block the street, that happens all over the place. The expectation is, given that there's sufficient parking, that people wouldn't park on the street and block it.
Yeah, sorry, you can't really legislate for very poor parking, indiscriminate parking in silly areas, can you, to be honest with you councillor Parnham? I think the point that's been made here is that, that the sweatpath analysis has been done, as we would do with any state of this nature, and that works. But if you get some plonker sticking the car in a right corner or something like that, there's not a lot you can do about it, to be fair. It could happen anywhere.
If only we had that power, we'd be able to get rid of about a third of our inboxes. Any other questions to officers? Councillor Minaka, then councillor Stables, please.
Thank you Chair. Just on page thirty-eight, consultation responses, going back to the pro improvement, the landscape team are kind of like saying, in that, in that responses, to consider that is pro or pro, could be improved. Is that something that perhaps maybe the officers could relate that to the developers? So, yeah, thank you, thank you Chair.
So yeah, that has been taken on board, and the eastern prow has been widened slightly, and that's why, and they've orientated houses with windows to increase overlooking on that side. And the way the land works, there would be like a half-metre retaining wall, and then a low timber knee rail to the outside of the gardens, so that it, it doesn't feel as oppressive and not overlooked. And the layout has been adjusted, so that the blue houses in the, oh sorry, hang on. This area here, there is a step down into the prow, and the layout has been re-orientated so that these houses overlook this bit, to make it feel more open, and like a more natural connection through this way as well, whereas now you have to go all the way round. Just to add about improvements to the prow, so this site plan, and it's my understanding, although they're not going to widen this area here to, because they, I don't think they can with fitting in the garden sizes, they are going to resurface that, it's marked up on the site plan that they'll clear vegetation and resurface it, so it's my understanding that all prow's will be improved, not just selected areas.
Any follow-up?
Yes, please Chair. So it's more like it's our understanding that that would be, would that be something that's put as an assumption perhaps?
We could condition that, speak to the applicant, yeah.
Condition number three, which relates to the public rights of way, where it's could accommodate that?
Yeah, also just to add, so landscape, so hard and soft landscaping is a reserved matter, so that can be dealt with at reserved matter stage in more detail as well, which would include the trees as well.
Any other follow-up? No, councillor Stables?
I've got three questions. Okay, my first question's around parking, and I just wanted to clarify, for the, there's some flats in the scheme, aren't there? How much parking is there around the flats? And the second part of that, is there any parking, is there any visitor parking?
Parking for the dwellings is SPD compliant, so there's, there's two per dwelling for the houses, and one each for the flats, I believe. Yeah, so that's, that's, that's SPD compliant. Visitor parking would be expected to be accommodated on Carriageway.
So no, there's not any visitor parking?
No, I think there are two visitor parking spaces, yeah. There's one here, one there. Yeah, but, oh in fact, there's three, and there's another one there as well, about two there, yeah. Yeah, it's been accommodated.
Thank you. Second question is coming back to the private roads piece actually, and it's about, is there a, is there a maintenance company that's going to be set up to manage the site? Because for all those, presumably there's some communal space here that needs to be managed?
So this lower pink road here is to be built to adopable standards as a type for shared surface road, so that could potentially be adopted. The other two, usually when people buy a house on a private road, yeah, they have to pay like a maintenance fee into a company to ensure its future maintenance, but that's, yeah, not really a planning issue, as long as it's acceptable with the transport SPD as the type of road and layout, we don't consider that usually.
Thank you, so that's up to the, the developer and the house builders, right, okay, thank you. And the third point is about affordable housing. So I understand, having read it, that it's not, it's not viable here, and that district value, you've, agree with that in terms of it, there isn't, it isn't viable to have affordable housing at this point, but I also understand that there will be an overage, so nearer the point of completion, is that right, six months before completion, that it will be reviewed again? So the question is actually, at that point, is there any likelihood, or are we able to put any condition in to ensure that affordable housing, if, if it is found to be more viable at that point, is there any condition that we're able to put in to ensure that affordable housing is built at that point in this location, rather than the money going elsewhere for affordable housing built?
That would be up for negotiation with the applicant, but there are situations in the past where the section one oh six has agreed to either providing affordable housing on-site, or as a contribution, has been the option.
I mean, you're right Laura, it'd be subject to negotiation as part of the section one oh six drafting, as to whether it's a feasible option, and, and they accept that. There's nothing in our policy that requires that. So they need to meet, you know, the letter of what the policy says. This goes over and beyond that, but that would be subject to negotiation. So I'd be cautious with that approach, but it has been done in the city, so the lawyers can certainly seek that where appropriate and possible.
Yeah, so, so what you're saying is that it's, our policy currently is that either affordable housing is provided, or the equivalent monetary value is given to the council, and they, we determine as a council where those affordable houses go. Is it worth reviewing that policy as, to ensure that we do try and get affordable housing all around the city going forward?
I'm going to drop the shoulder here to Jonathan to take that forward, because really what you need to do is determine what's in front of you, and do it to the letter of the policy that Nick has just articulated. Anything further than that, we can take back, and ultimately we'll see whether we can achieve what you want, councillor.
Any other questions, councillor Minaka?
Thank you Chair, I'm sorry I'm coming back on this. I've just remembered that councillor Ritchie has mentioned play spaces, any reason maybe the developers did not think of play area, especially that we're going to have three-bedroom houses and four-bedrooms, and perhaps maybe as an assumption, I'm thinking there would be families living there? Is there any reason why they did not think to put that into place maybe?
So there was an early iteration when it was seventy-nine dwellings that did include some public open space, but it was very, it was small, it wouldn't have been policy compliant, and I'm not sure if it could have fitted a play area onto it. But then when they took out that parcel of land, for viability reasons, they just said we can't do any public green space on-site, so there's just no space.
Is there any play spaces closer to the development?
Yeah, there is Standingly Park to the north-east, that's like about naught-point-four, naught-point-six miles away. Yeah.
One of the issues on sites, this is not a particularly big site in our terms, and one of the issues is getting standoff distances, because not all neighbours necessarily want children playing directly up to the boundaries, therefore we do our specified standoff distances, and on small sites this, it becomes a little bit problematic sometimes to actually fit them on the site anyway, but Laura will...
So it's just up there where the circle is, and a commuted someone could go towards play equipment there if that was decided to be needed.
Any other follow-up councillor? Yeah, any other questions to the officers before we move to comments? Comments? Anyone got any comments? Ooh, okay councillor Parnham goes in there just before I go to her.
Yeah, I like it, I think it's good, it's for affordable, not affordable housing that we need in that area, it's Brownfield site. You know, I think if we can get a little bit of consultation between the developers and the elected members on those issues that are raised, then I think it's, it's good.
Any other comments, councillor Stables?
I think it's a really good development, I think, you know, we've been to see the site, it's, it's awful, it's terrible, it'd be terrible to live there currently, and I think this is going to make a massive improvement, although normally, obviously we want to have green space available, and I think that's really important. In this, in this instance, not only is that park there, when we walked, you can see there's the area to the left, which is incredibly near where, where children could potentially go play as well. So I think that alleviates my concerns over green space availability. I'm disappointed that there's no affordable houses that are able to be built on-site, but in this instance, I think everything else in terms of the balance weighs in the favour of allowing this to pass.
Any other comments? Right, I'm going to ask Steve to very quickly sum up the debate, and then I'm going to be asking for someone to propose the motion, so Steve?
I've just captured two points, one was to alter, or certainly ensure that the condition number three includes all surfaces of PROs within the, that's how I say it by the way, PROs, I'll just give you a third version, within the site and within the gift of the applicant, but also just as a little bit of comfort, I'm not sure a question was answered really, about landscaping for the street trees, and condition number thirteen would ensure that they have to submit a drawing to ourselves with a tree that is considered to be suitable to the circumstances and surrounding, I think he said allotments, so I just thought I'd answer that.
So with that, a summary from Steve, do I have anyone to propose the motion? Yeah, councillor Parnham, second, councillor Frances Meeh. So we're all clear what we're going on to the vote for, so can I ask, all those in favour? And for completeness, all those against? Any abstentions? There we go, if you just want to sum up the vote?
The application's been unanimously approved in accordance with the officer's recommendation, but with the alteration to condition number three, resurfacing of the PRW.
So I'm just going to call for a fifteen-minute comfort break, because I've had too much coffee. So if you all want to be back for quarter-pass four, please. So if you all want to be back for quarter past four please. Thank you very much everyone for that. Item number nine, change of use from a car showroom to generous, I think I've pronounced that correctly, to a grocery shop, class E, bracket A, bracket at, number 145 Oldfield Lane, Upper Wiltley, Leeds LS12 4EX. Can I ask the officers to present the application please?
Thank you for that introduction Chair. This application is brought to panel at the request of a ward member due to concerns over highway safety. Views of a single storey flat roofed building to a small convenience store. It was previously used for car sales and then more recently as an ice cream parlor. It's a brick built building which has recently been rendered, which has a total floor space of only 86 square metres, which includes storage and a WC. The proposals would include two car parking spaces, bin store and cycle storage. And the proposal utilizes an existing access onto Oldfield Lane in close proximity to a five armed mini roundabout. The hours of use would be 8am till 10pm all week and the number of staff employed will be two full time staff. In terms of the site, that's before it was in front of us on the red line plan there. You can see that the site is fairly modest in size, as I said, it sits adjacent to an existing car sales and repair business just to the east, to the right hand side of that, that site outlined in red. It also sits opposite area of green space with the Oldfield Public House just to the right. It also sits within a primary residential area mostly to the west of two storey dwellings. There's also a fish and chip takeaway just on the opposite side of the road as well on Lower Wiltley Road. And also there's an Astor which is 400 metres down the road, just, just to the right. The Astor which is literally 400 metres away. Just running through some of the slides here. Yep, that's the photographs of the site in question here. So as you can see, it's slightly raised up from Oldfield Low Road on the right hand side. You can see the photograph on the left is the existing car sales and repair business. That would be retained as part of this proposal and the part of the site would be severed to create a separate business, which would include the change of use of the building, which is the white rendered building with the blue shutters on the right hand side. So that would be a modest shop unit, as I said, only 86 square metres, which also includes the back of house and toilet with the existing access used for customers and staff and deliveries. The next slide shows the footprint of the proposed shop, so as you can see, that's outlined in pink on the plan in front of you with back of house on the right hand side and a small staff toilet towards the bottom end. The plan also shows two car parking spaces towards the bottom left hand corner. And the area, hatch area denotes an area where, which would be prohibitive for any customers and vehicles to park. Towards the site frontage, you can see bin store and cycle parking as well. This is the elevation to the building here, which are fairly modest in terms of their scale, which would remain unaltered from the building that currently exists. And that's just a drawing to demonstrate the tracking of the site, so that shows how the site could be serviced and delivered, which is incumbent on the two car parking spaces not being occupied. And that's why we've included a planning condition, required a service management plan to be submitted and agreed as well. That's just to make sure that servicing occurs during periods where the car parking spaces are not occupied. So looking at the issues in terms of the principle of a shop unit there, it's very limited in its scale, it's, it's very, very small. And it's previously been used for retail quasi uses anywhere in the form of a previous car showroom sales and almost recently an ice cream parlor. In terms of its impact on any identified centres, it's very, very small in its scale. And given the, the size of the Astor down the road, it's very unlikely it would, it would lead to any kind of harm to the, to the Astor. In terms of the impact on amenity, again, because of its scale, small scale nature and its previous use, it's not considered to give rise to any noise or nuisance to residential amenity, particularly with the control of the hours of use as well. So that leaves the main issue really, which is highway and pedestrian safety. That's the main concern from residents' point of view and certainly ward members. What I need to remember here is that the access currently exists, so we're not proposing, or the applicant isn't proposing a new vehicular access. And our business has operated here for many, many years in the past, so we're not talking about a new use here. This is just an alteration of an existing business to a new use. So from that perspective, the highways department have no objections to raise. The application was supported by tracking diagrams, which I've shown on the screen in front of you, and a highways technical note as well. And the advice on highways is clearly set out in the report at paragraphs 33 to 42. Now, there has been a request by one of the ward members that CCT, CTT footage taken from a third party is played at this panel meeting. However, our. However, and in consultation with the Chair and also given that it's not normal practice to circulate or play video evidence, it would be not appropriate to play that video of evidence of vehicles in the local area, which actually showed a number of vehicle accidents taking place, which coincidentally appeared to be driver error in any event. What I would direct members to is paragraph 116 of the MPPF, which states that in considering planning applications, development should only be prevented or refused on highway grounds if there would be unacceptable impact on highway safety or the residual cumulative impacts on road network following mitigation would be severe, taking into account all reasonable future scenarios. So I'm emphasising the word severe at that point. So in this instance, officers take into account the previous use, the previous access, the limited scale of what is proposed, the amount of car parking that's proposed for the floor space, together with the tracking diagrams, we consider the impact would not be severe and therefore no highways objections raised. In all other respects, officers believe that the impact would be minimal and for those reasons we have recommended approval. Thank you Chair.
Thank you very much for that. We have an object to speaking against the application, so please invite councillor McCluskey up, you'll have four minutes start, four minutes once you start.
Thank you Chair and good afternoon folks. I'm councillor Adrian McCluskey, I've lived in Farney and Wiltley for thirty-four years. I even remember this junction when it didn't have a roundabout. It is one of the most feared junctions in Leeds. In a recent insert in the Yorkshire Evening Post, on the second of May twenty twenty-three, they had the seven most feared junctions in Leeds, this was number one. They talk about accidents, if you ask highways, you're told there have been six accidents in the last seven years, six incidents, and those are accidents recorded where there's been harm. The CCTV that was referred to, I sent in six examples, of which there were fifteen in the last three years. That doesn't include the recent one on the twenty-third, sorry, the fifth of June twenty-three where a car went through the chip shop. So, and the reference to driver error, these are all driver error. They're either hesitancy or speed, but this is what this junction produces, people are very frightened of using it. Many of those accidents and collisions that have happened have ended up with the vehicle on pedestrian areas. So I have great concern that adding another distraction will cause further incidents. It's literally turning five lanes junction into six lanes junction. The other area I have of concern is parking, two parking spaces. I know this is a small shop, but what happens if four people want to go and get some milk? Where do they park? And I've seen the parking around there, I've lived there that long, double yellow lines means nothing, there's a safety area where you're not supposed to park on, right on the corner Dixon Lane and Oldfield Lane. It's a red bricked, well, people still park in it. So I have great concerns about parking and the impact that will have on a notorious junction, which people in Wiltley really, really fear. Thank you, that's all I wanted to say was.
Yeah, thank you very much for that councillor McCluskey. I'm open to questions then councillor Parnham and then councillor Thirf and then councillor Stables.
Councillor McCluskey, thank you very much for your presentation. I've just got three points, three questions really, very brief, and I'd just invite you to comment them, comment on them a little further. So first, you mentioned residents' concerns, I'd like you to tell me a little bit more about that if you're able to. Secondly, could you tell me anything more about the accidents and incidents that you've mentioned on the mini roundabout? And thirdly, just as a bit of an add-on, you mentioned the double yellow lines and enforcement obviously is a concern for all of us. Can you tell me in your opinion, is double yellow line enforcement adequately dealt with in the area? Can you think of any other area, anything close by that you've had issues with maybe that you could tell the panel about? Thank you.
Sorry, yes, the area's not that far from Ellen Road, we frequently have parking issues and that, it's well known, it does get quite, quite a lot of traffic parking badly, not necessarily legally, but we do get people on the yellow lines. It's the classic one, I'm just nipping in, put the emergency lights on, therefore I'm allowed to do this because I'm just nipping in, so we do get that. We also have the chip shop customers across the road, so that Dixon Lane can get very, very narrow. So in terms of the other ones, residents' concerns, it's probably when we are out speaking to residents in that area, and it's quite extended, it goes to the Kellets etcetera, they're big concerns, what are you going to do about five lanes end, what are you going to do about it? I've had people ring me up at night screaming at me, get some lights on that junction. We have had lights on that junction during roadworks and it really doesn't work, then we're saying, get those lights off that junction. It was the third point you asked councillor.
You might have covered it, I asked about if you could tell me anything more about residents' concerns, anything about the accidents and incidents, I think you've probably covered that, but if you want to say any more, that'd be great.
In terms of the other concerns, we have concerns from parents. A primary school is 200 metres up Upper Wiltley Road, that was the main access for parents with their children coming down Dixon Lane, Lower Wiltley Road, Green Hill Lane, all the residential areas you see, they are a young community and so the children have to use these roads as well. We don't have anyone crossing people, so the, and as I say, the types of accidents that we get is primarily people taking the roundabout wrong, but some of that is due to speed and speed doesn't seem to bother some people, I'm going straight across. And as I say, when there is a collision, where does the cars end up or where do the cars end up? They end up on that traffic island, how many times has that light that indicates the traffic on it been knocked out? They end up on the footpath on Dixon Lane. So it is a major concern to a lot of residents. I mean, you'll get people saying.
Sorry councillor McCluskey, I think you've made your point very clear on that and I'm conscious of time. Are there any follow-up questions councillor Parnham?
No, that's made it very clear to me, thank you.
Councillor Thirf was next.
Thank you councillor McCluskey for your presentation, answering our questions. There was mention of a previous business other than the car showroom, desserts restaurants and others. Can you just explain about the experience with those? Obviously it's derelict at the moment, how long has it been derelict and what's the history with those businesses?
There's been two businesses, not one. Car showroom, we went quite a while back, it became a shower and bath fitting company. They didn't seem to do that much business. The ice cream company, Kings with a Z, again, never seemed to do any much business. So those are the two. I've no experience of anybody using either of those, any of the local residents.
Councillor Stables.
It's actually following on from that point, I was just thinking about what the impact is in terms of the change of use. So if it was previously used for car sales room and all the other things, the ice cream and so presumably there were cars that were going in and out then, did you notice what impact that had at the time?
It was attached to the other end of the car showroom so people could go out that way. Because you saw there's another entrance further down Oldfield Lane. Yep, that was part of the same business, so they could. So that would be more, and that still is the used entrance, access and egress to that car showroom.
Yeah, so previously before it was a car sales room and sales room, sales space, sales room, when it was an ice cream business, was it, when it was the bathrooms business that you mentioned, was that the combined space previously with the car showroom and therefore was it always the, was the entrance and exit always the other one on Oldfield Lane?
When it was the retail business, the ice cream parlor and the shower bathroom, that was the only access egress point because there's a barrier across the car park to the car sales room. It's a removable barrier that swings.
Any follow-up?
So just to clarify, the entrance, the only entrance was from Oldfield Lane, further up the lane, not the current one that's going to be used for the proposal?
No, for the previous two businesses, that is the same access egress that has been proposed for this.
Okay, so in which case, what was the impact from that?
They didn't get that many customers, I've never seen anyone use it.
Councillor McCluskey, that one?
Yes.
Any other questions? Councillor Jones and then councillor Thirf.
You can tell me if I want to. I do notice in the proposal on part two that it will have two members of staff working there and there's sixteen hours there. Now I'm deeply concerned that that would mean it's lone working. That has an impact on the potential of it being raided and the rest of it, which would have an impact on the public. Basically, I feel that the number of staff there would quite.
This feels like a comment and not a question councillor.
No, I'm just trying to, it's health and safety issue to be absolutely honest. Well, the question is, do you feel as though that that's the appropriate number of staff?
Potentially not, no. We don't have any other single staffed shops in the area, so no, I don't think it's safe. I don't think it's safe for customers or for the staff working there.
Councillor, can I just be clear? The issue of lone working, councillor, you're probably aware that I'm going to say this, this is an employment issue, health and safety is an employment, it rests with the applicant and the operations that they wish to undertake. They can employ as many people as they wish or have one lone operator as a sole trader in the unit. It's not a material consideration for the purpose of this application, so please be cautious.
Any other questions councillor? Councillor Thirf and then councillor Parnham.
Thank you Chair. One of the conditions that's potentially going to be put down today is details of cycle parking to be submitted for written approval in due course. Obviously there is a cycle track that runs along Oldfield Lane, is it a pathway? Just let me finish, I'm sceptical of the fact of how many cyclists will come to this shop. So in terms of the situation, can I ask how regularly do people cycle up and down Low Wiltley Road, Oldfield Lane and surrounding streets?
Thank you councillor Thirf, you're mistaken, there isn't a centimetre of cycling in Farney and Wiltley.
I think that did answer your question in a roundabout way, any follow-up? Councillor Parnham.
Councillor McCluskey, can you just clear up for members of the panel, I'm thinking about councillor Stables, looking at the map there, it might be, we might be under the impression that this new proposal would allow exit through the car park, can you make it clear that that's not the case? It's simply the exit on to the actual roundabout itself, is that right?
That's my understanding, there's currently a removable barrier, but it's permanently in place. I believe the land or the areas are owned by the same people and it used to be, I mean, a previous life it was a petrol station, but that's way before we had traffic, but it does have a barrier in between the two.
Any follow-up councillor? Any other questions? Thank you very much for your time councillor McCluskey and for answering those questions. Now, I don't believe we actually have anyone on behalf of the applicant, so we will move to, unless I'm getting correct because I got my list late, no great, so we will move to questions to the officers. So questions to the officers please. Councillor Ron Tree.
Thank you Chair. I'm just wondering from a highways perspective, whether highways have assessed if, has believed that the volume of traffic is going to increase as a result of the change of use and if so by how much? Thank you. I do apologise if this was covered in the documentation, I couldn't find it.
Yes, we have looked at the trip generating potential of this site and we've looked at across a range of retail based users, sorry, given the history of the site, you know, it's been used as a car showroom, it's been used for trade sales and it's been used as our ice cream parlor and now it's proposed to be used as like a very small general stall. And in assessing that, I use the Trix database, which is a database of traffic surveys from developments all over the country. Basically, it's a database that's been used by transport planners for decades, for as long as I can remember and I'm pushing it a bit now. But it's, that's the industry standard for looking at the trip generation potential of sites. And the trip generation of a retail type site of this size is about five trips in the peak hours really, and that doesn't really change across all of the uses that I've looked at either. It might change by one or two, but certainly nothing that would constitute a severe impact.
Thank you, and you consider that that sort of level of increase doesn't have an implication
either for safety, which is covered in the report I think, or congestion at the junction on the approaches to the roundabout?
As I said, I'm not talking about a roundabout a five trip increase, that's the range of trips for those types of retail users. So it's got a lawful retail use now, so that would have a generating potential of around five trips in the peak hour, such as this development that's coming forward. The change, the change of use in traffic terms is negligible, it certainly wouldn't have any severe impact.
Any follow-up?
No, thank you.
Any other questions to the officers please? Councillor Parnham?
Just going back to the entrance and exit, I know we talked about historically it being a car showrooms and it's a bit difficult to actually discern from that picture, but when it was used previously, that building, there was an in and an out, two separate entrance and you didn't have to use the, what I'm trying to get at is, I don't think anyone in their right mind would ever use the entry exit, which is actually on the roundabout, people would enter and exit from, to the right. Do you see what I'm saying? Obviously now, if this is proposed, if this proposal goes through, that won't be allowed will it? People will come in and out on the roundabout itself, is that right?
If I'm wrong, that's the exit and entrance for this, for this, no, proposed for this application. That's the one for the garage and that's the reference to the barrier that blocks them off and separates them. So there's not a through route.
But they used to be when it was a one business.
Yes, because there wasn't, I don't think there was a barrier in that location there at that particular time, but the proposal here is you have got two separate uses and of course, I mean, I'm assuming there would potentially be in separate ownerships, in which case there'd be a bit of an issue if they suddenly started ripping up the barrier and moving through them, but so that's our understanding and.
It has also been used as a separate business as well, where that would have been the only access to that building, in and out.
So the current proposal is to sever the physical link in planning terms and physical terms as well, so both businesses would have their own access and exit and there's a condition number five as well, which requires details of that barrier to be submitted and agreed.
Any follow-up question councillor?
No, it was just so that we're clearing our minds where we go, where the people would go in and out, that's all.
Councillor Thirf and then councillor Minaka.
Going to ask one question, which is, in the previous incarnations of this shop and showroom, have there been previous applications that have therefore been accepted by this authority that allowed the change of use, particularly at that time to an eatery restaurant?
Yeah, there've been approvals, but I think as the planning history also points out, there's been a refusal as well for a shop, that was a previous application before this and that was refused on highway safety grounds and that's in the report as well. And that's because very limited information came with that planning application, whereas the current application includes details of parking, includes details of bin stores, includes details of tracking. So whilst there've been previous acceptances and approvals for changes of use, the previous application for retail was refused, which is now considered to be. application for retail was refused, which is now considered to be, have been addressed certainly from an office perspective.
Can I ask then, as a result, the two car parking spaces have been proposed that also potentially will then be needed when any delivery also takes place, they were not part of that application?
The previous application, no car parking spaces were proposed, whereas the current proposal is that that kind of accommodates or addresses the previous reasons for refusal by proposing the tracking and the car parking spaces.
Any follow up?
Is it a requirement to provide cycling facilities or could that provide extra additional parking area?
We would expect cycle facilities, but on something like this, because it's so small, it would probably equate to one space, probably Sheffield Stand.
Does expect mean that it has to be, you'd expect it, that's a guideline, but it's not an absolute must?
Parking in this area, in this area in the Transport SPD is an expected level of parking.
Thank you Chair, page 64, highways. It states there, course strategy policy two requires, I know that new developments and all that, to make sure that there is secure access to pedestrians and cyclists and people with impaired mobility. And councillor McCluskey has just mentioned regards to the safety of that space and you can kind of like see from what we've been looking at, that the street itself, it's quite, on the other side, it's sloppy and the roundabout itself, it's worrying me a Does that mean with this application, the person would need to maybe make adjustments to, I don't know, pedestrian coursing or that will not apply with this application? Because I'm just thinking, there's like, how many strands, four, five, six? And there will be people coming to walk in there and buy? I think I'm just a bit concerned with that. Will they be asked to adjust that or no?
Just to clarify, are you asking officers if there needs to be any alterations to the pedestrian access in order to make this compliant? Is that what you're asking?
What we've got is an existing building that's served by existing footways in all directions really and in terms of generating improvements to the highway, the development is just too small to make that viable really.
Any follow up? No, any other questions to the officers? No, moving on to comments then please, councillor Parnham?
Thank you Chair. I did ask whether I needed to declare an interest, I don't, but I do live 50 metres away from this roundabout. I used it twice a day, I almost caused a collision this morning, coming down here. I did honestly, I've been driving for 33 years, this is the worst roundabout, I did have second hesitation about buying somewhere near it because it is really dodgy and for me, it's just not worth the risk, for all the reason that councillor McCluskey elucidated on earlier. Also, I mean, the shop floorage is so small, I can't understand how it could possibly be profitable in itself, but I do worry, there's a school nearby, just up Lower Wiltley Road to the top there, there's no safe crossing points across the street. My big worry when I first read this was, yes, there are double yellow lines round each little corner of the roundabout, but if anybody decides to park on them just to nip in, to buy some ciggies or whatever, there's no way you can get round it. Seriously, it's just, it's a no brainer.
Any other comments? Councillor Firth?
I can see where councillor Parnham's coming from, but I have, there is an anomaly to what we're talking about, which is the fact that in this area, there are other businesses that have no parking facilities, such as Ritz Fisheries. And as a result, that business is sustaining an income despite the fact that it doesn't have parking facilities and also potentially is on an even more dangerous corner, given the fact that it has no parking facilities at all compared to what is available here, although I would appreciate that it should be more than two car parking spaces for a shop. But unfortunately, there is also the comment that has been raised by officers, that this particular premises, there are no material reasons why, what they're projecting, what they've looked at and how it's similar behaviour elsewhere for shops of this size, that we can turn this application down.
Councillor Stables?
I would agree with councillor Firth actually in that although this is clearly a really dangerous roundabout and I completely sympathise, it must be dreadful to have to go over on a regular basis, given that there is, highways have said that there is going to be no increase, they believe, in traffic as a result of this, then I don't see how we can turn it down because it has to be a material reason to turn this down and if it's not going to, the increase in traffic, there may well be an increase in traffic, which will make it worse, but it shouldn't be as a result, from the evidence we've seen, it's not as a result of this shop.
Councillor Rontry?
Thank you Chair, I'm of a similar mind to the two previous speakers, to be honest. I think what we're looking at here is a really bad and problematic junction and many of us, I'm sure, have experienced similar problem junctions in their own ward, I know that I do. And the fact of the case here is that it is a bad junction, but from the investigations that highways officers have done and the conclusions that they've reached, allowing this would not make it appreciably worse and there are reasons for recommending acceptance and I can't see grounds for not following that, thank you.
Councillor Anderson?
If we were to turn this down, are highways confident that they could defend the council if we had highways grounds as the reason for being so, being so, so in other words, what I'm getting at is, is your evidence an unbalanced view, right, which means you can interpret it however you want, or are you clear in your mind in terms of the advice that you're giving us?
Can I ask Steve, because technically we've got past questions, but I'd like to Steve just to give a comment very quickly.
Sorry, I appreciate John could probably answer this as well as I could, but what you have in front of you is a property that has previous uses, you have what we're considering to be no real impact or additional impact on the highway, an acceptable access in and out, whether you like it or not, with turning facilities within the site and ultimately just turning back to page 64 and course strategy policy two and the recent changes to the MPPF, which has set a much higher bar in terms of turning anything down on highway safety issues. It reads, it has to be an unacceptable impact on highway safety, so what I've just said, we don't think there's an unacceptable impact, so that's kind of like struck off as it were. And then it goes on to say, and this is the clincher unfortunately, which is going to make it problematic for a lot of applications where you may have highway safety concerns, it has to be severe. Now, your definition severe is going to, you know, between different people is going to be different, but severe does take you down a certain route and I think it'd be fair to say that we do not think the impact here is going to be severe at all because of the pre-existing uses, the use that we have in front of us. So I think we would really struggle to defend it.
That's fine, that's what I wanted to say because by listening to the comments being made, it was going to be on highways grounds, I know from experience, when I've tried to argue on highways grounds in the past and been shot down in flames, it's very difficult to justify it, a refusal on highways grounds and that's what I was getting at, it's not that I don't have sympathy, it's just, I know from experience, I've got the scars on my back.
Any other comments from anyone before I ask Steve to sum up? Steve, could you please sum up?
Well, I understand and empathise with the members' concerns about this particular junction, because of the framework with which we operate, obviously we are still recommending the application for approval without any alteration, as is on page 55 of the report.
So bearing in mind the summary and the officer recommendation, do we have anyone to propose the motion? Councillor Stables, the second please. Councillor Rontry. So moving to the vote, being very clear on what we're voting on, all those in favour?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
All those against?
Two.
And any abstentions? Could you just confirm the vote please Steve?
Eight.
Thank you very much for that, so moving on to item number 10, the change of use of dwelling house to residential care, internal alterations and insert of new roof lights to the rear at 22 Stanmore Road, Burley Leeds LS4 to RU. When the officer gets here, can I ask the officer to present the application?
of the question set out in paragraph one of the report.
Because the mic can speak.
Closer, that's all right. My first time. Is that better? Okay. So, to give members an overview, the location in red is in Burley and surrounding it, local centres shaded in blue and also to services, amenities and schools. Car free travel is supported by nearby Burley railway station and frequent bus routes. For these reasons, it's considered to be a sustainable location. Closer up, it is in a residential area with families, students and young professionals. To the north side of Stanmore Road. To the north side of Stanmore Road are semi-detached properties and to the south side are terrace properties. The site has a front and rear immediatey space which shares driveway to the side, which will remain as existing. Members can see the relevant property painted red to the left side. To the right, the property had a 1.5 storey half span rear projection and private garden. Objections were received mainly related to concerns around parking, traffic and the residential amenity of the occupants and neighbours. Since the report, two more objections were made, which were closely related to previous comments received. On-street parking is shown at the time of the site visit. For avoidance of doubt, I've shown you the on-street parking in sunny weather to show typical local parking arrangements with no yellow lines to restrict parking. Those parking arrangements will remain unchanged from existing, new objections have been received from highways. The existing property is a four bedroom dwelling house with the typical living, dining and kitchen rooms. We have received a minor correction on submitted existing plans, an attic roof light had been removed prior to committee and is now only shown on proposed plans. Internally, the first floor layout would be reconfigured to have three bedrooms with the bathroom relocated from rear to front. The attic would have a manager's bedroom and office. Overall, there would still be four bedrooms with no alterations to ground floor. Three children within age range of 10 to 17 years old and one staff member would reside, overnight in their own private bedrooms. In support, one additional staff member will work between the hours of seven in the morning and eleven at night. Infrequent visitors are expected, similar to what could be expected for the existing C3 use. Externally, the front bathroom would have an obscurely glazed window at the first floor. To the rear, three roof lights would be added to ensure that the rear bedroom would have adequate daylighting and outlook. Rear roof lights would be separated by at least 25 metres to the opposite neighbours, exceeding council minimum guide distances for privacy. bins and secure cycle storage would be located in the rear garden, minimising visual clutter from the street scene. To conclude, given the likely range of similar movement, expected residential occupation and noise levels of a family or household occupying its current C3 use, the proposal for a C2 use would not lead to a material change of use for the residential area. As such, the recommendation is for approval, we are suggesting conditions. Thank you Chair.
Thank you very much for that and I can see councillor Venna is quite eager to get up straight away, so we do have a speaker against the application, so if you'd like to come up councillor Venna, you'll have four minutes from when you start speaking.
Thank you Chair, I'm speaking against this application as a ward member and as the former executive board member for children's social care for five years. I am a fierce and passionate advocate for looked after children and care leavers. As exec board member for children, I personally drove our strategy to purchase and develop eight small group living homes for one to two children to live in and firmly believe that looked after children should live in ordinary homes in the community. I also know that children who live in residential care have multiple and complex needs. They are survivors of trauma, almost always abuse and/or neglect, they cannot live in a family setting such as a foster family and need to live in a residential home with a professional care team around them, although that care team will of course work incredibly hard to create a family feel to the home. We have a specification we developed for purchasing small group living homes, which I sent to members in advance of the meeting. This aims to give children space to live, eat, sleep and study. It also recognises the potential additional impact on a community of traumatised children with complex needs. This house does not meet our criteria. I am objecting to this application because I do not believe this house and location are good enough or appropriate for children needing to live in a small children's home. It does not meet our criteria in not being a detached house and in fact being in a densely populated area and in not having private boundaries or off-street parking, only a shared driveway. As the demographic of the area is predominantly young people, house sharing, which I will come on to, the parking is particularly constrained, that photo must have been taken during the day, and this house will have more cars than an average family home. The application and the officer today said there won't be many visits, but there are visits to a children's home that are statutorily required, social worker visits, independent reviewing officer visits, regulatory, regular children's home inspections, staff coming and going etc. Furthermore, the demographics of this area are entirely unsuitable. While some families live in this street, it is predominantly made up of groups of young people, house sharing, students and young professionals, so are the adjoining streets and the wider area. This is the student area of our ward, it is not a quiet street as the application states. The 2021 census shows the largest resident group of the postcode is 20, 24 year olds, 60% of residents in the area at 18 to 24. This means a noisier, more transient population. Our specification also states that homes should be one kilometre from dangerous spots such as railways. This home is around 100 metres or a less than one minute walk from a railway bridge with a very high drop down to tracks. It is also approximately 200 metres from Headingly Stadium. Curstall and Headingly councils received frequent complaints from local residents Kirkstall and Headingly councils receive frequent complaints from local residents regarding noise and antisocial behaviour. The proximity of a world-class stadium also means that the parking problems on Stanmore Road become chronic when matches are on, adding to the concerns about this property not having off-street parking. The local demographics and proximity of a railway bridge and stadium would mean Leeds city council would not consider this a safe, quiet and stable enough environment for one of our own children's homes. I'm aware the planning inspector has approved a number of schemes of this nature on appeal on the basis that they only create the same impact as any family home. While this may be true, I think it's debatable. Most parents caring for traumatised children with additional needs would not choose this particular home in this location for the reasons I've outlined. I've referred this to plans panel in the hope that the council will develop a policy position not to approve any private children's home which would not meet our own specification for group living homes for children. My request is that this application is refused and also that the matter is referred to development plans panel for this policy position to be developed. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that councillor Venna. I'll now open up two questions to councillor Venna. Any questions? Councillor Parham and councillor Rontry and then councillor Francis Mear.
Councillor Venna, thank you very much for your presentation. Just one question. You mentioned towards the end about a policy position that you want to develop. Could you just tell us a little bit more about that, please?
Yeah, of course. So, our criteria that we use for the children's homes that we purchase is developed from our very vast experience of running children's homes. And most of the time, at any point, our homes are all rated good or outstanding. And the specification that we've developed is what we think is necessary for looked after children to have a good quality of life. We, I know that the inspector has approved on appeal some applications of this nature recently on the grounds that they don't create any more, any more movement or disturbance than an ordinary family home. Personally, I think that's really debatable and I'd question what their knowledge is around children's homes, children who live in children's homes and the needs they have and also the amount, as I spelt out, of statutory and required visits there are to a children's home. But I also think it's a reasonable position to say Leeds, as you know, is an outstanding rated authority for children's social care with a specific outstanding rate, outstanding rating for looking after, for looked after children and care leavers. And I think it's a really reasonable position for us to develop, for us to say, we will not approve applications for children's homes in the private or third sector which would not meet our criteria. Even if the legal advice from Nikki is that you approve this because we might lose it at appeal, I would urge you to refuse it because I think it's, it would be really good for this to be tested with the inspector because the purpose of this is that we need to ensure that the right homes get consent for children who are extremely vulnerable, have had a really difficult start in life and as a result have multiple and complex needs. So, again, to reiterate, my request is that this is refused, but also that it is referred to development plans panel so they can look at developing supplementary planning guidance where we would have a policy position that we don't approve planning applications for children's homes that don't meet our own criteria that we've developed as a council. Thank you.
Any follow-up councillor Pan?
Yes, please. Yes, just briefly. So, what you're saying is based on your experience and the evidence and what's in front of us now, you're saying you want, you're urging us to make this a test case because you're concerned that if we approve this today, it's kind of opening the watersheds to suboptimal care for the most vulnerable young people and children in the city?
Yes, as I've laid out, I don't think this house or this location are appropriate for a children's home for the reasons that I've given. And as I've said, I know that the planning inspector has approved some cases on appeal, but I think we should test that, that position because I think it's debatable, as I said, that the planning inspector has said children's homes only create the same level of movement or impact as any ordinary family home, which is not the case. It's children with multiple complex needs. There's a reason why we have the specification we do in terms of, you know, space around houses, off-street parking, et cetera. And I'm sure you will be urged to approve this in cases appealed, but sorry, I'm repeating myself.
Sorry to cut you off councillor Venna because we're going up and I'm conscious of questions. Councillor Rontry.
Thank you, Chair. And before, before I put my question, I think I ought to say for transparency's sake that I do live at no great, no doubt great distance from this site. You'll recall I did query with you whether I should declare that as an interest and you said not, but I think it's, I think it's, I think it's fair to let panel members know. Councillor Venna, you mentioned the stadium. Could you expand a bit on the implications at the proximity of the stadium to this site would have residents who might live there, what disadvantages it might, might have specifically for them? Thank you.
Did your site visiting clear this site this morning? No, okay. This is very, very close to Headingly Stadium. Headingly Stadium is right on the border of Headingly and Kirkstall Wards. In Burley, this is the closest residential street to the stadium. You walk to the end of the road and it's literally about two hundred metres away. The biggest problem it creates is parking and that's the, by far, the most significant complaint Kirkstall councillors get about the stadium. On the Headingly side, they get complaints about litter, antisocial behaviour, public urination, noise. On our side, although we get some of that, it's predominantly parking. It's really chronic in the Stanmores and Talbots during match days. If you were going on shift during a match, you would have great difficulty getting to the house. So would any social worker who needed to visit during a match time or when matches end. And bearing in mind Headingly is cricket and rugby and other events like occasional things like boxing matches, concerts, et cetera. I don't think it's an exaggeration to say that if you were going to work during the time of a match, you may not be able to park within quarter to half a mile of the house. People who live in the area, I know, will put the matches in their diary, will make sure they don't attempt to go out or come back during match times. It's a really, really chronic parking situation because some of the streets on the Headingly side of the stadium have residents parking. We don't have any on our side of the stadium, so all the parking is on our side and this street is the closest on the Burley side. Matches may only be every couple of weeks during season, but during that time, getting to and from the house will be extremely problematic. There is also the noise of the stadium, the noise of people arriving, coming back to their cars after matches. There is occasional complaints we get about antisocial behaviour because of the proximity to the stadium, though it is primarily noise, is primarily parking. And that adds to the concerns that local residents and I have about the parking problems on this street which are constrained anyway and become chronic during match day.
Any follow-up councillor?
Thank you, Chair. So, in terms of access for staff working at the place, clearly you'd expect, you would expect that if there's a delay, there's going to be an impact on the residents and potentially serious problems in that regard. Is that so?
Yes, I think if you, yes, I think, well, I think for anybody, any professional staff member, social worker, et cetera, who needs to get to the house during the time of match, of matches, it will take a considerable amount of time longer than usual to get there. You won't be able to park anywhere near, which will cause further delays. And similarly, I think if anyone's leaving at the time that a match finishes, it will be equally problematic. Kirkstall, Kirkstall and Headingly really gridlock in that area during matches and it's the most significant complaint we receive from people living in that area about the proximity to the stadium.
Any other follow-up councillor? Councillor Francis Mear.
Thank you councillor Venna. As champion for care experience, my concern is the fact for the young people that would be residing in that property, their exposure to alcohol and to social behaviour and drugs and how accessible it would be for them, even though they'll be in a care home. But the fact is, some of these young people are already coming out.
Can you please turn this into a question councillor rather than a statement?
What are the, what are the, can you tell me the, the positive needs? What would help looked after child?
Sure, yeah, absolutely. So, as I said in my speech, children are taken into care primarily because of abuse and/or neglect. When children, our, our priority as, as an authority is to keep children safely in their families wherever we can. And as you know, we do a lot of work around that and our numbers of children looked after are declining despite what's happening nationally. Our, our first choice after that if people can't stay in their families is they're in kinship care or they're in a foster family. We try and keep children in family settings. Children who live in children's homes cannot live in a family setting for a variety of reasons. They've usually survived quite extreme trauma. They may present with challenging behaviour. They may present with other complex risk issues. The fact is, they need to live in a set, live in a setting with a professional care team around them, though, as I said, that care team will try and make it like a family, a family setting. So, our criteria reflects that. That's why our criteria is ideally detached houses, boundaries around the house, private parking space. It's space for the children, but also reflects the additional impact that a children's home may have on a community. And that's why I would question the inspector's judgement in saying the impact isn't additional. All our children's homes are ordinary houses in ordinary streets, but they have a specific criteria to ensure the children have a good quality of life and impact on the neighbourhood is minimised because obviously we want children to be welcomed in the neighbourhood and be able to thrive. My biggest concern about this, this application is the proximity to the railway track. In the criteria that I sent to you, it's really clear that we locate our homes at least a kilometre away from danger spots like, like railway tracks. This, this house is about a hundred metres from a really high railway bridge with a significant drop down to the tracks. Children, even when they're in children's homes, are not kept under lock and key. Oster would have, have taken a really grim view of it if they were. They are allowed to leave the house and I think that represents a really, really significant risk of children who present more of a risk to themselves than children who have not survived the same trauma that looked after children have. As I said, the demographic of the area, the proximity of the bridge and the stadium would mean we would not consider this as a home that we were buying to be one of our own children's homes.
I'm sorry to cut across again councillor Venna. I'm just conscious of time and you have made that case very, very clear. Any follow-up councillor Francis Mear? No, I think the next was councillor Stables and councillor Firth, then it'll be councillor Anderson and councillor Minaka.
Thank you. Just coming back to the issue of parking and I just wanted to ask you if you've got, can give us any indication of how many vehicles you think would need to be parked at any one time outside the property on a, on an average day? Or comings and goings through a day?
I don't think I could quantify that exactly, though obviously you've got the staffing pattern which will mean staff coming and going. My experience of children's homes is that you sometimes need additional staff to be rotated on if they're a particular, if they're having a particularly challenging time. You've also got really, really regular visitors like social workers, independent reviewing officers and children that are very regulated, they get inspected a lot. So, I wouldn't want to quantify it, but I would say with some confidence that you would have more vehicles and more vehicular coming and going than if it was an ordinary family home.
Any follow-up councillor? Councillor Firth?
That's it. Councillor Anderson.
Okay, councillor Anderson, then, please.
If anyone here was to purchase this property, would we not have the same problems on match days and on other days trying to get to work even by, by, you know, from the train station? Would we not have the same problems?
Yes, you absolutely would. That's why it's such a big complaint from our residents. My concern about this is that this is staff coming to work and look after children who are particularly vulnerable. You may have people needing to get to the house in a hurry like social workers, for example. So, yes, absolutely. Anyone living in this area is very challenged by parking on match days, but it's one of the reasons I don't think it's an appropriate place for a children's home and we wouldn't consider purchasing this house ourselves.
According, if I can just follow up on that. According to page seventy-four, paragraph two, bullet point two, it says that there will be two members of staff at any one time with two staff working during the day oh seven hundred to twenty-three hundred. So, in other words, at least one, possibly two of the people are coming for seven o'clock in the morning and at least one or two of them might be leaving at seven o'clock in the morning. So, that's before any sporting event takes place. And if they're finishing late at night, that's after most sporting events take place. So, why is it significant? You've, you've emphasised the sport and I'll declare a partial interest. I'm somebody who does go to sport for cricket purposes there. So, what's the difference? Why? Because the day, the times they're talking about there, I don't think are going to be any greater or any worse than councillor Rontry coming to a council meeting at any of those times. He's going to have exactly the same issues to have to face up to.
Could you please frame it as a question councillor Anderson? You're going into a comment now.
Well, I'm trying to find out what impact does she feel because we've got oh seven hundred to twenty-three hundred hours. Why is that? Why is that giving you cause for concern? Because normally that would be an acceptable movement.
Yes, I think that's, that's absolutely true. My concern would be if there were any kind of emergencies which are more likely to happen in this home than in an ordinary family home, if somebody needs to get to the house in a hurry for any reason, including professionals who are supporting children, then that they would have difficulties during match days. But you're right in that the staffing patterns generally won't coincide with, with matches. I would also stress that matches are only every couple of weeks, but when they're happening, the parking problems are chronic. The other point I'd make councillor Anderson is if you've been to cricket, the cricket numbers are much lower than rugby. We don't get many complaints about cricket matches. Sorry to offend you that rugby's more popular, but the, the parking problems that we have are primarily around rhinos matches.
Other sports are available. Any follow-up councillor Anderson? Councillor Minaka and then councillor Jones. Oh, no. Oh, yeah, because you, you can go first, right order, and then councillor Minaka.
Chair, just on one point. I appreciate councillor Venna said she's here in a personal capacity. I think it is inappropriate to then speak on behalf of the authorities saying that potentially we wouldn't purchase this property when we're in a semi judicial position where we have to decide this based on the material considerations that are here on the paper. So, I hope that colleagues will take that into account. I want to ask, you mentioned about parking restrictions. There are parking restrictions on St Michael's Lane to do with the stadium. Why are there no parking restrictions on Stanmore Road itself or Stanmore Terrace to be able to tackle that or is it not an issue on those roads in particular, as you alluded?
No, it's, it's a chronic issue, but there's only parking restrictions on some of the Headingly, on the Headingly side of the stadium. And to be honest, that's partly why we have such major problems on our side because some of the roads on the Headingly side are restricted. I'd absolutely take your point councillor Firth about speaking on behalf of the authorities. So, I want to be really clear. I've probably made some statements like saying we wouldn't buy this house. Obviously, I'm not in a decision-making capacity around that now. What I would stress is that this house doesn't meet the criteria that I sent you, which we use for purchasing small group living homes.
Any follow-up councillor?
One thing I just wanted to ask was what is the availability of facilities for young people? For example, there's Elida Gibbs Park that's accessible just at the end of Stanmore Road, a few, well, literally two doors down from this property. Wouldn't it be the case that individuals that are in this property could go one way or the other to be able to catch a bus on the major routes that are available at both ends?
Yeah, absolutely. As I said, families live in this area. It's a great area to bring up children. There's access to green space. It's very accessible in terms of public transport. There's good schools in the area. In many ways, it would meet the criteria that I sent you yesterday, but there are other factors which give me great concern and have led to me feeling this isn't an appropriate location for a, an appropriate house or location for a children's home.
Any follow-up councillor? Councillor Minaka, please.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you councillor Venna for, you know, all the presentation you've given. And as you know, I also sit in the same panel, childrens and families. Just a quick question. You said, you said, and I know councillor Firth has just mentioned about not speaking on behalf of the council, but the question is kind of like at the back of that to say if this, would you suggest, because you also mentioned about testing this, would you suggest that plans panel, when it comes to the change of use into residential care, would you suggest that they should also go into training, that is, for the childrens and families in determining what is the best or, you know, specifics and criterias? Because it seems as if we, you know, this plan- Because it seems as if we, you know, this Plans Panel here and the specifications and criteria to choose.
Sorry councillor, I'm going to step in at this point. The planning authority is a separate authority within the council, there is relevant training required when it comes to making planning decisions and our legal responsibilities and what we have due regard to. So, I please, we're not here to discuss what policy is in that sense, you're here to ask questions about the application in front of us. So, do you have a question about the application in front of us, please?
No, Chair, thank you.
Councillor Jones?
I declare an interest. My partner, until three weeks ago, worked in this service, and my daughter also worked in this service. So, I'm declaring an interest. But what, but I, I think what's missing here is that when we're talking about car parking, there's a thing called family conferences, which can involve the police.
Councillor, before, before, sorry, before, no, before you, you need legal advice before, you've declared an interest in a public meeting, we're not aware of what that interest is.
My partner works for the service.
Which service?
The social services.
Children's Services at Leeds City Council?
Yes.
This isn't an application by Leeds City Council, this isn't an application by a private individual? Is this just for noting and recording? It's not prejudi, it's not?
I'm trying to be helpful around parking, to be honest.
Right. Sorry, can I interrupt briefly, because I think Nikki was probably going to do anyway? I just think we need to have some clarity here, because the continuous references to we and the council in terms of policies are not planning related, it's children's services only. And, and we can't take those into account. I'm making that distinction because certain references that were made by councillor Venna refer to what she would have done in her previous role, and, you know, what improvements were made to children's care during that time. But that's to council owned and operated services, doesn't apply to this that's in front of you. I want to make that absolutely clear, unfortunately. So, I do understand and empathise with all the comments that were made by councillor Venna, and I also understand the comments that were made about making reference to Development Plans Panel too, which I'm sure Jonathan's noted. But I just want to make that clear, because it was getting blurred, and I think, I am going to steal Nikki's word here, I would urge caution if you're not supporting the officer recommendation, because we don't actually have in front of us anything that we think we could refuse this application, because all those are the references to standards do not relate to this application in front of us.
So, to take the point, you, you've been given advice, so.
What I'm trying to, and you can tell me to shut up again, quiet everybody. What I'm trying to establish is I disagree with the analysis that it will have no effect on that.
Then, then you need to frame that as a question, please.
Save it for comments.
I'll save it for comments. Any other questions, please? Councillor Francis Mear, did you want to ask something? I believe you had your hand up.
I'm going to ask it, don't stop me.
Okay, yeah.
Councillor Venna, in your previous role as executive lead for children's services, can you please tell me what the young people have stated would, would be an ideal home for them on their feedback, and also being part of the corporate parenting board as well, and the child experience?
This is not a relevant planning question, you're asking about a different policy area regulated in a different way by a different part of the council. We're here as members of the planning authority to make a decision in a quasi judicial fashion. Are there any other questions to the objector, please? No. Thank you very much for your time councillor Venna. I do believe we have a speaker in support of the application, Stefan Skimischer?
No, no, no.
No, have I got that?
No, that's the one that's.
Oh, right, okay, no, no, we don't, so that's why, do we not have anyone in?
No.
Okay, so we don't actually have anyone in support of the application, there's my piece of paper gone. Questions to the officers, please? Councillor Panham and then councillor Firth.
Yeah, just a very quick one, and I may, I may, may have missed this, but in the report, it refers to joint use of a bathroom, a toilet, is that normal? For, for staff and for the, the users, service users?
As I understand it, you're asking about whether shares bathroom is appropriate? Okay, that's right. Well, that's not something for us to take into consideration, that we opt to Ofsted or Care Quality Commission to decide whether that is appropriate. We as planning authority, we don't decide that area, because that's related to safeguarding. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. On the point, there's quite a number of points raised about objections, supporting comments, you name it. Can I just ask what the actual figures were on supportive comments, objections, et cetera, as then, and general comments, as they're not mentioned in the report?
I can't remember off the top of my head. There were quite a few objections from the same addresses, and that kind of muddies numbers. So, yes, I can't quite tell you, but I can update you afterward if you wish to.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to say that certainly, let's, can I make sure in the future that we do have those figures? I appreciate it may be on this occasion that I've missed it, but I don't believe that they're in the report. It just says that there were comments, and I'm sort of actually saying that. On a separate point, I just wanted to ask officers, I was going to save this for comments, but can I ask their legal view, particularly legal, Nikki, and your position, at least two meetings ago, we had a similar application to this in Rodley at sixteen Chilton Court, or eighteen Chilton Court, whereby at that meeting, both myself and councillor Anderson raised serious concerns about parking, including what has been raised by colleagues about the nature of there being more cars, as councillor Venna has also raised. And those were, at the time, dismissed based on evidence that was put forward by officers. And also, at the same time, when we raised concerns about a property, we were also then said that there was no material reason to then be able to take it forward. Is there not a concern that therefore, if we were to go with what the executive member, councillor Venna, has said, to test the system, and there was an appeal, are we not going to be vulnerable to that judicial, that precedent?
Can we do this in two parts? If you could give the planning position in high ways, and then I can give the general position in legal terms in defending, defending the decision.
I understand your point completely councillor Firth, and I think John would just now repeat basically the advice was given at that point, just for everybody's benefit.
In high ways, as Steve's, I was mentioned earlier, we have two reasons why we can object to development, and that's based on whether it has a significant safety impact or severe cumulative impact. In this case, the standard for a, for a residential dwelling of this size would require two parking spaces. The standard for this type of residential dwelling requires one parking space per three residences, there's three residents in this house, so the standard is for one parking space. So, if we went to appeal on that basis, we wouldn't have a policy position to be, to be able to defend that objection.
Can I just add something to that? Sorry, John, the point I was trying to emphasise was the nuance of what the parking standards for this type of operation are based upon. It's not the people that are coming and going, it's not the caregivers or nurses or anybody else or doctors, it's about the actual occupants. And because there's three, only one space is required.
Would you, would you like some guidance in relation to the point of our position at appeal? I mean, councillor Venna was clear on the advice that I was going to give to you, I would urge you to be really cautious. You were, you were required to determine planning applications on national and local planning policy, and that and that alone. We don't have a policy that prevents or, or sets out a framework on what this property should look like internally, its location, its specification. Planning regulations concerns itself with buildings and buildings alone. And I'm very sympathetic to the requirement to have good standard of housing for this particular, I'm a former childcare protection lawyer as well, who practised in London, so I understand the, the feeling of this and the council's position, and quite rightly we've got to put policy on that, but this relates to a planning matter. I am not aware of any appeals where this has been argued, and of all the appeals that I've looked at, there are comments by the inspectors of councils being inept when they're trying to bring in other policies, or not recognise that this is to be used for a care, a residential purpose in the same way a normal house functions. And I totally take on board the fact that there'll be other comings and goings from professionals, but that is the planning inspector's position at this moment in time. To test it gives us risk to costs, and potentially set a very poor precedent for us as Leeds City Council in arguing a case where I, as your legal advice, would say the chances of success are very poor. And I'd urge you to consider it in accordance with the, the planning report that you've got before you. I hope that answers your question councillor.
Any flow councillor Firth? Councillor Francis Mear?
Can I propose this is moved to Development Plans Panel, please?
Nikki might want to step in here, just a clarification councillor Francis Mear, the issue about the policy referred Development Plans Panel, but you wouldn't refer the application to Development Plans Panel? We can refer the issue about the lack of a policy that covers the issues that were raised by councillor Venna to Development Plans Panel, because Jonathan would pick that up. However, we cannot, we would not report this application to Development Plans Panel for consideration, because that's where, this is here where that should be determined.
It's, Development Plans Panel don't have a decision making, they're a consultative body of this council, nor have they got the statutory powers to determine an application. It's only in this forum that you can determine this application. Is, is that helpful? The two separate issues?
Can we turn the policy around? Make it look constantly like.
Well, yeah, Jonathan.
Yeah, just for members' information, this issue has been raised previously by other members and is being considered by our policy team at the moment. So, in due course, this may well appear on an agenda for DPP going forward. But, yeah, we do have to be cautious on the fact that a lot of the issues mentioned here today are relating to a, a child protection policy really, rather than planning, land use planning policy. And that distinction does have to be made between the two.
Can I, can I just remind members that there's also a separate regulatory body that, that governs this area, and that's Ofsted. So, there is another step that this applicant needs to go through. And the way that process works is they need to have got planning permission first before they go through that process.
Any other questions to officers? Moving to comments then, please. Councillor.
Just been looking at our system, it appears that there have been about fourteen separate letters of representation, but from, it seems to me, six addresses in terms of objection to the scheme.
Can I, can I just ask whether any supportive comments or general comments other than that, just to have the full shebang?
These appear to be objection comments.
So, one last call for questions before I go to comments. Councillor Anderson?
I'll be honest, I have sympathy with what councillor Venna is arguing, because I've argued this plenty of times in the past. I've asked for Development Plans Panel to take a, to develop a policy, and we are no further forward. And it is worrying that despite a number of Plans Panels, which, well, bearing in mind it's been at least two, and there's been an interim on one of the other ones, there must be probably at least two opportunities at Development Plans Panel for something to be taken forward on this. But I'm sympathetic to what she's doing, but because we don't have a policy to refuse it, I personally, and I'm one of the more artistic ones around in terms of coming up with reasons for refusal that some people might not always think of, I cannot come up with any reasons to refuse this. So, I'm going to be supporting it, although I do agree that we need to make it very clear to whoever it is that's setting the policy for Development Plans Panel, we're asking time after time after time, and we're not being given the opportunity. So, somebody is holding this up.
Any other comments colleagues? Councillor Firth?
Thank you, Chair. Further to my particular point about sixteen Chilton Court and the precedent that was set there, we had a similar discussion, it feels like deja vu, but I'm saying the things that were said by, by colleagues opposite, and they're saying what I was saying. I'm sympathetic with what's been said. The concern is, is that let this be a warning, that we need to take this further through Development Plans Panel and actually go further. And we should have done that with Chilton Court, never mind this situation here. And so, as a result, as councillor Anderson has said, we have no ability to be able to turn this down on any material way. I, I don't appreciate, I, I understand councillor Venna's position, but I don't appreciate being told to test the judicial system when so often colleagues remind me that we can't then appeal for the sake of the fact that we are, will then leave the liability to our taxpayers and to the public purse. And therefore, given that we've set a precedent, given the situation, given we're unable to turn it down, I believe personally, Chair, that we should move the motion, I'd be happy to do it in my name.
Going to ask for any other comments first, because I want to make a quick comment for councillor Panham, and then we'll see if there's a second. Councillor Panham, and not Panham, councillor Rontry.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, it's true, we've had quite a few similar applications to this one over months, and I think, I think I've voted in, in support, in support of those that, certainly in support of those that have passed. And I'm quite, quite aware of my, my permission as, as living quite close of the potential for accusations of NIMBYism. What is troubling me about this is that the, the concerns that have been raised are concerns about child safety, and they're not about whether the home is run, well, would be well run, which would probably be the province of Ofsted. It's about whether the location is a safe place or not. And, I mean, obviously I've listened carefully to everything that's been, everything that's been said, and I'm aware of the vulnerability of our position, our position if this were to go to appeal. I cannot, I cannot bring myself to cast, cast a vote in favour of the application. Thank you.
Anyone else that hasn't spoken? Okay, I'm going to quickly say something, and Steve wants to quickly come in. I think we all agree with the comments about making sure that we have the best possible solutions placed. And just for absolute reassurance, this has been brought up at joint chairs, the decision of joint chairs was that instead of bringing in a supplementary policy, it would be looked at as a broader policy framework to make sure there was proper strength in any policy that was developed. That obviously takes time, it has to go through a legal process, it has to go through relevant inspection and checks. So, that, it's more about the slowness of developing policy rather than an intent to develop policy. So, I just want absolute category assurance, this is being looked at. Steve?
Yeah, yeah, sorry, just to ram home of the point, I'm, I'm slightly repeating what councillor Rose just said. I understand completely everybody's angst about these developments. We have been here before, and councillor Firth knows full well that we went through a lot of hoops with Chilton Court, and unfortunately came to the same recommendation that's coming now. Slightly defensively, in terms of what was said about somebody holding this up in terms of the DPP, it, it is not the case that, the issue that we have as officers, and certainly on my policy officer's side, who are obviously tasked with coming up with some sort of policy, it has to be cogent, it has to be robust policy, and it has to be defensible. And to get all that right before we come back to DPP, to bring it to yourselves or whoever sits on DP for decision, there's quite a lot of work to go, even though it seems like it's very easy to just drag a policy off the rack, it's not quite as simple as that unfortunately. So, we are actively working on it, and Jonathan obviously will reiterate this yet again as he goes away from here, because he tends it, I don't.
So, any other comments before I ask for a second or alternative motions to put forward? Any other comments? Do I have a second for the proposal put forward by councillor, councillor Anderson? So, could you please sum up where we are before we go to the vote, Steve?
Yeah, thank you. I mean, it was a good debate at the end of the day, wasn't it? And in terms of the, the concerns raised by councillor Venna, it sort of brought it all to a head again, didn't it? So, we will move it forward, but you have in front of you this substantive motion, which is to grant permission subject to the following conditions, which are listed one to five on page seventy-three.
Are we all clear what we're voting on? So, can I ask for all those in favour, please?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
All those against?
One, two.
And any abstentions? Could you please sum up the vote?
The motion's been carried to grant approval on a, I forgot my wording, I was going to say, what was it? Thank you. Majority vote, it's a long day.
Thank you very much. So moving on to item number 11, retrospective application for the change of use of part of dwelling use as a hair salon at nine Addingham Gardens, Armley, Leeds, LS 12 3 TJ. Could I please ask the officers to present the application?
Thank you. Thank you Chair. This application has been brought to panel, member for reasons that are in paragraph one of the report. The site is in Armley, just here. It's close to Armley Locust Centre to the north east, the immediate area of residential with commercial and industrial area to south and east and a nearby Aldi and school. There are frequent bus routes nearby, so it is a sustainable location. The close up of the site shows the property is within a large cul-de-sac, within a small offshoot. To the west Albany Street serves as a connection through route connecting Wingate Road to Tom Road. The application site is shown in red outline and to the rear is a garden with a parking Development cul-de-sac offshoot is shown with a view from the main Addington Rose route looking north. The property is a two-storey mid terrace with small front amenities base and the parking space is shown as gated. The proposal seeks to use a first floor bedroom at rear with washing chair and cutting station to dry hide a silencer on it to minimise noise output. The salon is supposed to be in operation by one person four days a week, Tuesday to Saturday by appointment only. Usually there would be one customer at a time within expected six per day, on occasion two may be present to have their cotton dry and colour, which would be a longer time period of 2.5 to 3.5 hours. An interval of 15 to 20 minutes between appointment is proposed to minimise traffic. The sheen at curtain has been fitted as screen views to neighbouring gardens. There have been a range of supportive comments and objections received at the issue, since the issue of the committee report, we have received one additional supportive comment similar to what had been discussed in the report. Main concerns highlighted were impact to neighbours from noise nuisance related to the operation, parking and traffic, with overlooking from the rear bedroom window to two neighbours' gardens. Officers advise some of those can be reasonably managed by the suggested conditions. A review of parking in the locality indicates that on-street parking remains unrestricted and available on the nearby rows of Addington, Addingham Gardens and Albany Road. Subject to suggested conditions to manage impacts, the small-scale and restricted operation of a hair salon is considered unlikely to lead to a material change of use for the residential area. As such, the recommendation is for approval. Thank you Chair.
Thank you very much for this. We do have a speaker in opposition to the application. Can I ask for Anne Cameron to come to the front please? You will have four minutes once you start speaking. Thank you.
Your access officer states this doesn't comply with P10 V1, which says development is accessible to all users. Surely Leeds City Council support diversity? Discrimination doesn't fit the criteria for DEI, there's no disabled access. Our privacy has and is being invaded. Residential homes do not have 30 plus people, strangers to us, visiting in a week. Even if they did, they wouldn't all be in an upstairs bedroom. A voil à a window, this doesn't stop anyone seeing out, just stops people seeing in, anybody knows that. My garden is now a no-go area. The noise is totally unacceptable, shouting, chatting over the noise of the hairdryers, cars in and out, door constantly banging, people up and downstairs, my husband works nights, totally unfair. The effect on our quality of life, our peace, our health in our own home caused by this venture in a residential area has already been documented in detail and presented to the council in our objections, so we find it incomprehensible that this application is still under consideration. The appraisal states the lawful use of the planning unit is residential. The proposal seeks to have change of use as hair salon. Normally considered a main town centre use, we are neither. Also, it will add to local community services. Why? The applicant had a shop nearby for approximately 15 years before just opting to use her residence for business, saving money while the council lost money due to loss of business rates. The area lost yet another shop, adding to degeneration, something the council is under obligation to do something about. No planning permission was sought for this move, it was just done. This kind of business run from home is unlike many post-COVID arrangements which were built around using the internet. People and traffic coming and going all the time, the street is just not big enough to accommodate this. I reiterate, it is a residential area. The proposal section states on-street parking space will be available. Rather a sweeping statement, how can that be guaranteed? Anybody can drive into the street and park where they like. The area at the back is gated with no parking signs on the gates. 27, 28, 29th November, there were two lots of clients together, both morning and afternoon for two of those days, this happens a lot. There was more than one hour overlap. Third day, two clients in together, one of these clients carelessly parked her car, blocking the rear access to about six properties, causing chaos in the street as two residents were trying to access their homes and their usual parking spaces. This client did exactly the same thing on her next visit, no emergency services could have had access if needed. Your recommendation that one chair is removed, why are there even two? But also states if people are having hair dyed, there will be an overlap. Why is there a need for an overlap, which would be at least an hour? One client is complete, then start the next client after the 20 minute interval. How would it work with only one chair unless the removed chair is going to be wheeled in and out when required? Who is going to enforce these conditions? Business hours are also longer than is stated, 10am to 5pm, five days a week. Frequently clients are seen arriving from as early as 9am, I've actually witnessed a client leaving at 9.40am and clients leaving well after 5pm. There was also trading on a Sunday in December, we have CCTV recorded proof if required. This is our home in what is supposed to be a residential area. If we want it to live beside a noisy shop with strangers constantly in and out, we wouldn't have moved here.
Thank you so much. Thank you for that. Questions to the objecter please, councillor Panham?
Anne, thanks very much for your presentation and thanks very much for your patience today, we've had a very long session. I've got just a couple of questions for you Anne. So this, number nine, Addingham Gardens, it's in a block of three, isn't it? Block of four, yeah. So, so my first question is, where are you in relation to that?
Next, after number nine.
Okay, thank you. Secondly, how long has this been going on? And thirdly, you mentioned your husband working nights. So on a typical day, if there is a typical day, what time does your husband come back in the morning and what time does he need to sleep to? And, and sorry, just as a supplementary, can you just tell me a little bit more how it's, I mean, it's obviously infecting, affecting both yourself and your husband. Can you tell me how it's affecting your husband's health and family life?
Well, my husband doesn't work until early in the morning, he works from about six o'clock and gets home about midnight. So he is a night owl, so he's usually got to come down a little bit, so he's up for, you know, an hour, a couple of hours. So he sleeps until about 11 o'clock the next morning, that's his usual sleep pattern and always has been generally. And I can't remember what else you asked me.
Well, I was just, I was wondering how it.
Oh, how long it's gone on?
Well, how long it's gone on and what kind of effects, if any, it's actually having on your, on your husband's sleeping patterns?
Well, because he can't sleep because of all the noise. People coming in, we've had people actually coming to our door, ringing our doorbell, mistaking us for next door. And it's cars banging doors, there's people up and down the stairs, it's just unacceptable.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, and it's been going on actually since about May last year, I think.
Any follow up councillor Panham? Any other questions councillor Firth?
Thank you for your representation this afternoon, it's evening I should say now. Can I ask, what's the situation with parking then, if there are a number of people coming? Is it, is the street a busy street already or what is the situation as a result, has it been impacted as a result of this development?
Well, I do think that it's, it's a cul-de-sac and it's very, very tight for getting in and out. People sort of tend to have their own little parking areas if they can use them, but as I say, you can't guarantee parking because anybody can come and park and just stay there all day. So it is quite, quite tricky for parking.
Councillor Stables?
So just following up on that, is there any off-street parking in the street at all? Because you mentioned about that next door, there is a parking space at the back, but she, people can't access it because there's a gate, is that correct? Do you want to just go, tell us about that?
Well, it's, it's an area that's sort of, it's at the back of the house. The occupants put a fence round and a gate, which is like a double gate with a wheel in the middle of the bottom of it, because it's really, it would be unwieldy to just open. And it's got no parking signs on it and it's shut is the gate constantly. You've actually got a picture with the no parking signs on somewhere and the gate.
Sorry, just to follow up, how, how many of the houses have got off-street parking?
How many what, sorry?
How many of the houses in the street have got off-street parking? Have got, you know, driveway where you can park off the road?
I don't know about the ones at the back, there's, where the woman blocked the access, that man has to drive round to get onto his property. But I don't know that, nobody's got a drive, no.
Can I remember, unfortunately, can I just refer members to page 101 of the paper copies? I'm not sure, I missed it because I had to go to the loo. You know. Councillor Anderson's got it, yeah.
There we go.
So that, you can sort of relate your question to that councillor Stables?
So, so sorry, I really can't see what parking there is from any of these pictures. Can, can, but my question was, is there any off-street parking?
There is the potential for some off-street parking, but it is limited. The applicant's property does have that gated access, which they're suggesting could be used for parking with the gates swung open. But yeah, when you look at the cul-de-sac here, it is very, very limited. There's only one or two properties that have actually done that by utilizing part of the garden in the main, it is on-street.
Any follow up question to the, any other questions to the objecter? Thank you so much for your time in answering those questions. We do have speakers in support of the application, could I please invite councillor Hagueup and Maxine Robinson? You will have four minutes between both of you, which will start when the first person speaks. Thank you. Maxine Robinson, yeah.
Hello Chair, sorry, we've brought Mark with us as well, who will answer any questions, he's a neighbour.
That one, sorry, sorry, sorry. Hello, I'm Maxine Robinson. I've been a hairdresser for 35 years and I've lived in the, sorry, I've lived in the property for 35 years and been a hairdresser in the community for over 25 years. Unfortunately, I had to make a decision to leave my LS 12 salon due to personal reasons and to move my business home, also to scale it down. This is my livelihood and my only source of income. I provide a close and personal service to many old age pensioners in the local community who have spotted my business for over 25 years and more, and for some, I am a lifeline, a friendly face and an ear for them on a weekly basis. Because a lot of my clients are elderly, they do not drive, so parking is never an issue. My business is a lot more efficient being at home, as I am using a lot less energy than I was previously, because it's only 12 square metres, opposed to the large shop that I used to, used to have, and it's better for the environment. The waste disposal, the waste is disposed of properly by Commercial Waste Company every Tuesday about 1.30. I've done everything to comply with recommendations from the planning regarding the designated parking area. It is accessible at all times while my business is running. And I also have 20 minutes between each appointment unless I have an overlap when colouring or highlighting, otherwise there's only myself and one client at any, any other time. I prop my front gate open during the day, so there's no noise of it opening and closing, so respect to the neighbours when clients, delivery drivers, postmen, friends or family come during the day. I do not work on sociable hours and certainly I don't work Sundays. My family come round on a Sunday, I have cut my mother and father's hair on a Sunday and my friends come round Sunday, but I do not work on a Sunday. I usually open my business around 9.30 to 10am and close between 5 and 5.30.
Thank you Chair, I'm councillor Kate Hague and this property falls within Farney Warkley, which is the ward I represent. I'd like to say that the applicant has been at great pains to get this process right and has had many conversations with officers about what she needs to do to apply for this permission. When it comes to the application itself, there's no evidence really that one or two additional vehicles visiting the property would make a difference. Many residents, it's not very clear from the photo, but many residents do have off-street parking and or garages on their property, which they have access to quite freely. The road is quiet, there's no other businesses, but I would contend that actually the use of a hairdresser, people coming and going, isn't much more than you would expect from a typical residential property with a large family, say. The applicant's happy to provide the parking space to the rear and fulfil the conditions and of course the gate is locked with no parking sign, so she can have that access rather than have people parking in front of the gates. The questions raised about the enforceability of the conditions is speculative and suggests that the applicant is not acting in good faith, and I would say from my conversation with her, she very much is. Noise such as doorbells, children, I think that's all within normal residential use and would not be excessive, playing your radio, we all have to live with each other as neighbours and I think the steps. as neighbours, and I think the steps the applicant has taken are reasonable. She's spoken to Waste Disposal and doing that responsibly, she's a responsible business owner and a very experienced hairdresser, so she does know what she's doing. And as for the overlooking, I think that, given the nature of hairdressing, people are focused on what's happening within the room, rather than what's happening outside it, and mostly looking in the mirror to see how it's going. I had my hair done yesterday, and I certainly wasn't looking around me. And when it comes to the question of people being there to have their hair coloured, I don't know if many of the panel have had their hair coloured, it does take a long time, so there's a long waiting period where people could be...
Please, please.
Another customer could be dealt with, thank you.
Thank you so much. Open up two questions to the supporters, having councillor Firth indicated already.
Thank you Chair, thank you for your representation. Councillor Hague has just mentioned that the applicant has gone at great pains to get this right. Can I ask as a result, why we have a retrospective planning application then?
February last year, I think it was the fifteenth, yeah, the fifteenth of February, I inquired, I asked a council worker who I informed that I wanted to work from home four to five days a week. She told, she gave me a number and an email address, which I emailed, and I've shown all this to Diane Tyndall, the enforcement officer. I asked them, who do I inform that I'm going to meet, I want to work from home four to five days a week? And she gave me, they replied back to me, it was a selective licensing, and they replied back saying, I didn't need a licence for my conditions unless I lived in Harles or Beeston, so it didn't apply to me.
So there does appear to be a misunderstanding or a miscommunication, and as soon as Maxine was informed that she needed planning permission, she took steps.
Thank you Chair, and thank you for the answer. I was asking about a planning application rather than licensing application, and I do appreciate it can be complicated for anyone not in the political bubble to deal with that, but I would say that it has been stated by somebody also making a representation that you're going to get this right, and this is after that's already begun. So I would ask a separate point, because the salon is effectively already operating, where do you currently have that? Do you have your customers downstairs? Do you have them upstairs? Or do you do both?
No, no, no.
If somebody's enabled to?
Well, I don't have people that are able to get up the stairs, and that was a thing, I did lose a few customers when I left the shop, because I said to them, you're not going to be able to come because I've got a staircase. And so I can't do them people, only the people I can do is if they can get up the stairs.
Any follow-up councillor? Any other questions, councillor Stables?
Just, you mentioned that most people come on foot, I just wondered if you can give us an idea of, in an average week, how many people, or in an average day, let's say, how many people are likely to drive for appointments?
Well, because a lot of them are elderly and they live locally, they walk, but there's, I do have some that come in cars, but they normally park where my husband parks during the day. So there's only normally one car at a time during the day.
Any follow-up councillor? Any other questions, before I come back to councillor Firth, from anyone else? Councillor Firth?
Thank you Chair. On a separate point, there was the photo shown where there's no parking in front of your gate. Can I ask, what's the capacity in terms of the number of cars that can park in there, and who parks in there, and who parks on the street?
At the moment, nobody parks on there, and we're leaving the gates open, so it's accessible for clients to park there.
So can I ask, do you then park on the street as a result, and if your husband's there as well, or anyone else who lives with you, they park on the street?
I park on the street all the time, my husband's out at work all day, so he's not back till tea time.
Any other questions to the applicant in support? Councillor Parnham?
Maxine, many thanks for your representation and your patience for waiting. I do know the area, because I live close by. I used to be a councillor there, yeah, and I leaflet all the time there, I always get that round. But, yeah. Obviously, it's one of these classic conflicts of interest, where we've got yourself obviously wanting to provide a service, great. You've got a neighbour who's concerned about her husband's health, quite clearly, she's quite upset, and, you know, I don't want to dig any further into the relationship between you both, but it's probably, suffice to say, it's broken down. Is there anything, can you, first of all, is there anything you could do to make us feel a little bit more happier about passing this, in terms of like, maybe not having the music on in the morning?
Councillor Parnham, that's a really vague question, you need to be slightly more specific.
Okay. What I'm trying to say, is there anything you could implement to reassure residents that there won't be any impact for you to continue operating this business?
Well, for one thing, I don't play the radio aloud at all. Also, I have propped my gate open, my front gate, so that that's not opening and closing, and it's not making a noise. I've lowered the volume on my ring doorbell, so that when any clients, delivery drivers, postmen, family, friends, whoever comes during the day, it's lowered. Unlike the rest of the cul-de-sac, we've all got ring doorbells, but they're all standard volume, I've lowered mine. Plus, I've also put a diffuser on the back of my hairdryer to cut the impacts of the noise, which hairdryers aren't noisy anyway, it's not a noisy profession.
No, I read in the report that you put a silencer, I think you referred to it as a silencer, so...
It's a silence, yeah, it goes on the back of your hairdryer, so it like dubs the noise.
Yeah, so, okay, so you're pretty much committed to doing the best you can?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions to the applicant, please? Thank you very much for your time. Questions to the officers, please? Councillor Firth?
Thank you Chair. There was a raise, a point about the number of objections and the number of supportive comments, of which they came from seven households for the objections and four households for support. Is there any, I appreciate we can't give addresses, but is there any way we can get any view on where those objections or supportive comments are coming from, and are they from within that street?
Thank you for the question. I can only conjecture that they just kind of submitted their representation and then thought, oh, I shouldn't mention that, oh, I shouldn't mention that, and it just continues on.
That wasn't my question, unfortunately. My question was, are those objections from the seven households or the supportive comments from the four households in the vicinity of this property?
Okay, so from memory, quite a lot of supportive comments was from outside locality. There was a mix of supportive and objections within the immediate area.
So, thank you, so two questions then, the first thing is, were the majority of objections then as a result, as you've not mentioned they were from outside, inside the vicinity? And then I want to ask a quick question about access. The question is, is that our colleague has mentioned that the supportive comments were from outside the locality, so I was asking, where are the objections from, and if we can get that? And I have a separate question if we need to have some time to get it. Steve?
Sorry, Jonathan's just been having a quick look at where they are from off the computer system, so sorry to interrupt. It's slightly incorrect what Tom said, do you want to just mention it?
Yeah, from, I can glean from here, there are support comments from Addingham Gardens itself, so it's incorrect to say that, well, hard to assess, but, one, two, three, four, at least five that I can see on here.
And objections? Appreciate it might be a minefield, but that's the problem with the anonymising comments online, or not removing them from public view.
Shall we continue, we'll try and come back to it.
Thank you Chair, I've got my point there. There's an objection raised by the access officer, and I appreciate I raised that with the applicant themselves in relation to access because the salon is upstairs. Can officers comment on the applicability to this situation, given that the recommendation is to accept and permit, grant permission, how that plays a role in then we've actually wanted to grant permission? Thank you.
There's an objection from the access officer, but we have to consider the planning balance and whether there has been a material change of use for the area. If you think there is, then we need to come up with a reason why there is, so that we would be in a position perhaps to refuse it, or, so yeah.
While we wait, oh, Steve wants to come in.
Sorry, yeah, sorry, it is actually the other way around, we were just checking there, the majority of the letters of objections are actually from outside of the immediate vicinity, and just looking at here, two of the objections are from Addingham Gardens, but five are actually, five support are from Addingham Gardens, so it's actually the other way around, the majority of objections are from outside the area.
I just want to say that there were, one thing I'll just, it's interesting, you raised that with the comments, but obviously we've got to bear in mind, they're coming from seven households for the objections and four for the supportive, so we'll see how that plays out, but I appreciate that our system doesn't allow us to do that. Can I then therefore ask, has the council undertaken any parking assessment, given the concerns raised, or a noise assessment?
Yeah, the, this use class would fall under professional services, which requires one parking space per ten square metres, and this applicant's provided one parking space.
Any other questions to officers, please? Councillor Rontry?
Thank you Chair, looking at paragraph fifty in the report here, could you just explain the final sentence to me? It appears that there's been no material change of use in the area. I don't understand this, because sure, there has been a material use, that it ceased to be residential, and it's now being used for business purposes, otherwise, why is the applicant applying for planning permission?
So sorry, was the question, has there been a material change in usage?
My question is, well, yeah, what does that phrase actually refer to? It appears there has been no material change of use. Sorry, paragraph fifty, fifty, five zero.
Material is a matter of fact and degree, so say for example, a certain area might be more sensitive to disturbance, interruptions, all of those things, but you might be in another area where you might have the same noise, things going on, but it doesn't really affect the character of the area, and doesn't really give rise to a material change of use. So when we say that, we're kind of assessing it against the backdrop almost, and seeing, is there anything that stands out that makes us go, oh, it doesn't feel like a residential area anymore, it feels like a commercial area? Or does it feel just like a residential area, where's the material change of use there? Hopefully that answers it.
Okay, thanks, understood. Yeah, got it. Just to carry on from that point that councillor Rontry raised, I'm just now stood or stood in the bedroom of the house next door, listening to a salon next door, surely that impacts on that resident, and it is a change. And I can't understand why there's no need to put any mitigating, you know, soundproofing in or anything like that. Councillor Firth asked if there'd been any, you know, investigation into sounds, so it seems to me like, even if we want to allow this to go on, surely we need something to mitigate this impact on neighbours.
So just to clarify, question is, are you asking, basically, from your point of view, I'm trying to refer, raise this, basically, is because it's been used differently, therefore, does it mean that the character of the area has changed, and therefore it is a material change? I'm just wanting clarification of that question, sorry.
Well, councillor Rontry raised the issue of paragraph fifty, when it says, appears there's been no material change, but bearing in mind what we've heard and from the person who objected due to her husband struggling to sleep, there's been a material change, hasn't there, surely?
Sorry Chair, yeah, maybe the use of the language is perhaps not the best, I think what we're trying to say is, yes, there's a material use in that the use of that bedroom is effectively a hair salon, but it could be considered to be ancillary use to the actual main use of the property, which of course is a domestic dwelling. But there's no material use from our assessment of this, of the wider area, as a result of that small change to the property. Okay.
Would I be right in clarifying then, Steve, in terms of that answer? So for, say for example, someone ran a home office there where they had maybe deliveries coming, going back and forth, that, because it's not effectively changing the character of the wider area, even though it's changing the use of that maybe particular room or position, that's why it's considered as not changing the nature of the area, even though it's changing the use of that particular space?
In a way, yes, however, I think the problem here is that it's really a matter of fact and degree for the decision-maker, and obviously us bringing forward a recommendation, we think there has been a change of use to that bedroom, but we don't think, because of the small operation of that, it makes a bigger impact on the wider area. And just to put it back to my circumstances, because most of the time I'm working at home, you wouldn't, many of you possibly are at times, you may, if you're working at home on your own, and you haven't got clients coming to it, which I don't tend to have because I use Teams, then you wouldn't say that that was particularly a material change of use, because it's just one individual working over a computer. The subtlety here is the comings and goings of the additional people to the property. And as I say, as a decision-maker, it's a matter of fact and degree as to how much weight you put on that in terms of a detrimental effect upon the amenity of the area or adjacent occupants. Does that help?
Well, it does, yeah, especially seeing as we've had that person's, person here in front of us saying it does make a material impact on them, the neighbour in other words. So I'm just trying to, but as I said, it's a conflict of interest, isn't it? It boils down to a balancing act that we've got to make, and just a bit troubled by it, to be honest.
Key bit of that sentence was, it's a balancing act. We as officers have done the balancing act and brought a particular recommendation to you. You as members though, of course, are the decision-makers, we're just making the recommendation. So when you're doing that balancing act and taking into account what you've heard today, what you've heard from the two residents, it's up to you whether you weight it differently. Okay?
Councillor Stables? I'm slightly confused now, because is, isn't the planning application because of a change of use? Isn't that why this planning application's been brought? Because of a change of use?
Yes, but what I'm trying to, or we as officers are trying to say, although that use of that particular room has taken place, it's not that significant that we think it cannot be, that it can't be approved. However, you as the decision-makers, rather than us as the recommending body in these circumstances, you can put different weight onto what you've heard, and may take, may make a contrary decision to what we've recommended to you.
Sorry, just to come back on that, and so I understand what you're saying, so does that, so therefore, if we, if we were to say there is no material change of use, does that mean if someone else in another part of the city decided to run a hairdressing salon from their house? salon from their house, they wouldn't need to put in a planning application because there is no change of use?
I think the application is for the part change of use of a dwelling to a hairdresser's or use of one room within that dwelling. What we're saying is that the overall impact within the locality is not sufficiently harmful for us to consider, it either changes the overall character of the area or it significantly impacts on residents. And in terms of evidence, if you were to go against that recommendation, you'd have to demonstrate that there is sufficient evidence of significant harm to local amenity, which we haven't been able to identify that a level of harm.
I was just, I was just going to explain it, to help, Jonathan's absolutely right. I think the use of words is slightly confusing for you. I think what you should focus on has a bit, the materiality of it. Forget the change of use, this is a change of use application. The materiality of us as officers, we consider it's not significant, but you may place different weight on that and say, actually, do you know what, I think it is significant and then when I'm looking at my balancing act, it weighs in favour of this or it weighs in favour of that. So it's the materiality of it, that's how I, would you agree obviously? Yeah, okay.
Counselor Minack and then Counselor Francis Mear.
Thank you, just two points. I think, yes, questions. I was under the impression that the, no change to the material, you know, there's no change of material use is because it's already in operation as the, no, okay. So now, a quick question. The elected member, Counselor Blackburn, has raised concerns regarding enforceability. How is that going to work because, you know, the type of business it is, how will they enforce time, which is noted on page 92 under proposal, paragraph two? How will that work out? How will that be enforced, the time?
Sorry to be blunt but the first part of that, what you just said, is not correct. The second part about the enforceability of the conditions, it would be done in any other way, we often rely upon other people reporting it to our enforcement team and then what happens, we end up asking the people that have raised it to carry out an enforcement log for us and there may be spot checks by ourselves. So we could enforce the conditions. But I got a tiny bit confused about the first bit and I don't think what you were suggesting was actually correct because there is, there is a material change of use here but it's not of the whole property, it's of that particular part of it. And as Jonathan and Nicky and I think myself and Tom have all said, we don't think that that change is that significant that it's refusable because it makes a detrimental harm to the amenity and certainly of neighbours but certainly of the immediate, of the area as well. Is that clear?
Appreciate the correction, thank you.
Counselor Francis Mear?
I was just looking at the maps, have any of the objections come from the neighbours from number seven and 11?
Jonathan will just check again but when we were looking at it earlier, I'm fairly certain the answer to that was yes. Let me just check. We know, we know at least 50% of that answer to the question don't we because the lady here confirmed earlier she lives next door.
So to be clear, one has said yes and one is in support and one isn't? Okay, doesn't matter which number it is, one is supporting.
Can I give you some legal advice? Can I give you some legal advice?
Stop giving out the yes.
The numbers of the addresses, the neighbours, the identity, that is irrelevant. What you've got to, you've got an objection and in your minds you've got to sort of distill what those issues are and you can apply that objection in a positive or a negative way. So I really think if we start saying quantifying objections and supporters, that's not how decision-making works, it's not how a planning inspector's going to look at this. Look at your policies, look at the advice that the officers are giving you. If you don't agree with it and you having listened to the objectors today and the applicant who's supporting the application, you may weigh those scales in a different way, that's entirely up to you. But please do not start quantifying objectors, that is a matter for you to consider in accordance with planning policy and the advice we're giving.
Any other questions before we move to comments? Comments please? Any comments? I will pass a very quick comment. I think many of us work from home and many of us probably, you know, don't have planning permission if we use our part of our house as an office and obviously I think it's fair to consider obviously this does have some more noise connected to it, but as officers said, this is about the materiality of the impact on the wider street, not the particular change to the particular room. And I think we just need to be very cautious when making our decision here that we are mindful that we're talking about a space within a property and weighing up whether or not we think that has a greater impact on the overall area than the particular use of that room itself. So could you please sum up where we are, unless anyone's governing comes up where we are with the debate Steve and then I'll need someone to propose a motion.
I mean, as it stands at the moment, you still have in front of you a recommendation to grant permission subject to a number of conditions and it's based on the officers' advice that we don't think that this is going to have a significant impact in terms of residential maintenance or car parking issues, but as Nicky's quite succinctly put it, it's up to yourselves as to whether you accept that and put different weight on those issues.
Based on that sum up, do I have a proposal for the motion from the officers? Counselor Jones, a second please? Counselor Stables? So we have a proposed and seconded for the officer recommendation, we've just had a sum up so we know what we're voting for. All those in favour?
One, two, three, four. Ooh, unanimously.
For good measure? All those against? Any abstentions? Could you please sum up the result?
Thank you Chair, the application has been approved in accordance with the officer recommendation on a unanimous vote. Thank you Chair.
Item, agenda number 12, date and time of the next meeting is proposed to be Thursday the 6th of March 2025 at 1.30pm. This concludes the business of today's meeting. Thank you for your attendance and contributions. I now declare the meeting closed and could I request that members of the public make their way out of the building? Thank you.